Good evening. I'm Mike Widmer, Town Moderator, and I'd like to call Special Town Meeting One to order this evening, November 29, 2022, for the town of Belmont. I'd like to begin this meeting, as we do all town meetings, with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I would now like us to have a moment of silence, please, for the victims of the mass shootings in Colorado Springs and Chesapeake, Virginia, and not only for the victims, but for all of the survivors, hundreds of individuals, maybe thousands, whose lives will be ever changed because of these massacres. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll now begin the, what we normally do at this point in the meeting, which is to test our devices. So in a moment, we will open the voting. And you select one, two, or three as the poll opens. All right, let's close the polls here. And let's scroll the results just to see if anybody has a problem with their voting. All right, thank you. Now turn to my opening remarks. I'll give a broad overview here of what we have in front of us. We're gonna do this in two nights. So the first night tonight will begin under Article One with one report from the Select Board Chair Mark Palillo. And then we will adjourn Special Town Meeting One and open Special Town Meeting Two. The reason we've done that is so that we could do these financial articles and complete them in one night. And so we will have Special Town Meeting Two, considering three straightforward financial articles. When we complete action on those three, we'll dissolve Special Town Meeting Two, return to this Special Town Meeting One, and the remaining business tonight will be the leaf blower bylaw. I'll say more about the sequencing of that when we reach it. Tomorrow night, there will be one one item only, and that will be the discussion of the library and the authorization of the 34.5 million impots. Couple of preliminary comments. Everybody, well, almost everybody voted, and we did a trial of doing three-minute limit rather than five-minute limit on speakers. Strong, strong vote to continue that practice, so we'll now henceforth have a three-minute limit on speeches. The fact is, very, very few people have, when we've had the five-minute limit, have exceeded three minutes. So I think it's a very reasonable limit and compromise. Also remember that there's a limit in addition to the three minutes of two questions of the speakers. And please, in follow-ups, have the comments, questions come through the moderator. That makes it much easier to keep order. Any amendments that are made, the only ones that will be accepted from the floor are simple, non-substantive amendments. And any motion to make an amendment must be made before speaking to it. And finally, I've said this at each of our town meetings, please continue our largely successful practice of having civil discourse. We can disagree strongly on issues, but we can do it civilly. Admitting to the floor the following people: Town Administrator, Department Heads and Staff, Town Clerk Staff and Town Council George Hall, the Warrant Committee and Comprehensive Capital Budget Committee, Superintendent of Schools, the School Committee and Staff, Planning Board, the Bylaw Review Committee, the Energy Committee, Recreation Commission, Community Preservation Committee, Board of Library Trustees, Library Building Committee, Ian Tadreus and Dante Melzioli. Tomorrow night, we will have a couple additions, but are there any requests for further admissions for the floor, to the floor for tonight's actions? Seeing none, we'll continue. One final, final opening comment. You'll hear more about this in a moment from the Select Board Chair. But we are planning a one-night Special Town Meeting for January 30, 2023. Again, that's January 30, 2023. That will be the, a virtual meeting. And if it's my call, that will be the final virtual meeting that we have, and we'll turn to, return to in-person meetings for the annual meetings in the spring. With that, I'll turn to the Town Clerk, who will read the warrant and describe the procedures for the meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Pursuant to the warrant for the Special Town Meeting Number One, to be held at 6:30 PM November 29, 2022, I, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk, do hereby certify that I gave notice of said meeting by posting an attested copy of the warrant and the moderator letter to the Select Board, requesting the town meeting be held by remote participation on the Town Clerk's official bulletin board in Town Hall, on the Town website, and at least five other places in town 14 days before the date of this meeting, in accordance with Chapter 39, Section 10 of the General Laws and Section 30-110A of the General Bylaws of the Town of Belmont. Furthermore, I do hereby certify that I gave notice of this Special Town Meeting Number One of November 29, 2022, by causing a copy of the warrant and the moderator letter to the Select Board requesting the town meeting be held by remote participation to be sent to town meeting members at least 14 days before the date of this meeting, and by causing copies of that warrant to be made at the Public Library and the Town Clerk's Office and on the Town website, all in accordance with Section 30-110B of the General Bylaws of the Town of Belmont and the Representative Town Meeting Acts of 1926. Mr. Moderator, may I continue? Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Night One of Belmont's Special Town Meeting. Moderator Mike Widmer has asked me again to just review a few key points regarding the use of technology for tonight's remote access virtual town meeting. As has been said, sent in several messages, please be advised that Point Solutions is the new name of the former Turning Point. All voting functions, however, are unchanged. Town meeting members who neglect to sign into their personal Point Solutions electronic voting accounts instead of using guest account are not actually voting in the encrypted, secure voting system. Yesterday, Monday, November 28, at 5:45 PM, I emailed to all town meeting members the Zoom link and the Point Solutions session ID and a detailed instruction sheet describing how to sign in. We hope that everyone will follow these instructions, and all votes cast can count. Town meeting members, presenters, and some town employees are the only people in the Zoom webinar. Members of the public are welcome to watch on www.bellmontmedia.org or on Community Access Television, Channel 28 on Verizon and Channel 8 on Comcast. This town meeting is being televised on Belmont Media, and we're very grateful for their help. For town meeting members who are voting at home, watching just the cable television broadcast, there will be a slight delay in what you see on television from the live event, but your Point Solutions will open up at the same time as everyone else's for voting. We will monitor that delay, but we ask you to vote as soon as the moderator opens voting. Point Solutions is the only way to be given attendance credit and to vote routinely tonight. Town meeting members needing technical support during town meeting should feel free to call our technology team at the telephone numbers I provided again on the November 28, 5:45 PM email. We ask all town meeting members to be careful to vote only after the moderator has declared that polling is open. Then please vote as soon as you can. Check your Point Solutions device for the confirmation that your vote has been received. The bubble of your vote choice will be filled in. If no bubble is filled in, please vote again and watch for the bubble to be filled as confirmation of your vote. The moderator will give a fair warning when polling is about to close. A special note to those town meeting members who are using only one device to watch both the, and participate by Zoom and vote using ttpoll.com. When it is time to vote, please be careful and double-check that you are on the Point Solutions TT Poll window at the top of your screen by confirming that it says TT Poll or Point Solutions app, not Zoom, or no vote can possibly come through for you. In the event a town meeting member cannot get their Point Solutions account to record their vote, the town meeting member should immediately utilize our emergency vote team standing by at the telephone numbers that I provided you in my email yesterday. Then call the technology team after your vote has been cast to solve the problem before the next vote is called. Town meeting members will not be able to share their video tonight. Everyone should be on mute whenever not actively speaking to the town meeting to avoid background noise distractions, like the train passing behind me. Town meeting members who want to speak should raise their hand by clicking or the Raise Hand icon at the bottom of the Zoom toolbar to be recognized by the moderator. He will recognize people in the order in which the hands are raised. When the moderator invites you to speak, they will call your name. The Zoom host will allow you to unmute yourself, and a microphone will appear at the bottom left of your screen. And then please identify yourself by both name and your precinct, just as you would at the microphone at a live town meeting. I repeat, anyone recognized to speak, please start by stating with your name and precinct. You'll know that your hand is already raised if your Zoom toolbar indicates lower hand. If you're dialed into Zoom using a telephone number and no video, please press star nine to raise your hand to be recognized, and you'll just join the line. Town meeting members who wish to make a point of order should use the Q and A tool on the bottom of the Zoom toolbar also by typing the words "point of order" only. A staff person will inform the moderator immediately that you have a point of order and break into the meeting for you. The moderator then will call upon you to speak. We caution you that if the moderator is already dealing with a point of order, which has been made by another town meeting member, we will ask you to listen to the outcome of that before breaking in with another point of order request. If you do not have a microphone on your computer, please use the Q and A tool on the bottom Zoom toolbar. Type your full name, precinct, and your entire comment or question. A member of the town meeting Q and A team will let you know the name of the Q and A team member who will be representing you, acting as your proxy. Listen for the moderator to recognize that person, who will, on your behalf, read your question or comment exactly as you have typed it. And finally, if the moderator asks for unanimous consent and you choose not to give it, you must immediately use the Raise Hand function or the Q and A function to get the attention of the team and the moderator. We will be watching for raised hands during that time period, and if we see any raised hands, the moderator will instead call for an electronic vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. We now turn to the preliminary motion, which is, which I will read. Move that the town meeting will meet and act on all matters on the warrant for this special town meeting by means of the video and audio conferencing and voting technologies described in the moderator's October 3, 2022, letter to the Select Board posted with the warrant. And to remind you, this is a formality that we must do at the beginning of each town meeting under the legislation that allows us to have a virtual meeting. So we will open the polls for, and, and this vote. Thank you. Ms. Von, Ms. Von Viglio, did you have your hand raised?
That was in the air, sorry.
No problem. Carolyn Bishop, your hand is raised.
Unfortunately, I can't seem to register my vote.
Carolyn, this is Ellen Cushman, Town Clerk. You should first try the, making sure you're logged into your individual account with your password. If it doesn't work, please use the emergency vote team and then call tech support to solve the problem.
Tech support got me registered with it and everything.
So this is, so Carolyn, sorry.
Sorry.
Given, yeah, given the meeting is 300 people, I think the best place to solve your problem is either with tech support or try the emergency vote nine.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know how that works, but thank you.
All right, let's close the polls here. All right. The vote is 228 in favor, three opposed, no abstention. Scroll through this quickly. All right, thank you. Final tally, 228 in favor, three opposed. Town meeting will now hear the motions in the following order: One, Three, and Two. One is the reports, Three is the leaf blower, and Two tomorrow night will be the library. Next slide, please. We now turn to the Article One reports. If there is a motion, I'd like move that the reports of the selectmen and other town officers, departments, and committees be accepted. I would like unanimous consent for this motion. Seeing no objection, the motion is adopted unanimously. I now turn to Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, who will deliver his report under Article One.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening to you and to all of the town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Appreciate the opportunity to provide some brief comments in regards to Collins Center report. I believe it has been provided to all of you. It's a really important report. It's a report by the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management, which is part of the John W. McCormick Graduate School of Policy and Global Studies, which is within UMass, University of Massachusetts, Boston. I must say, it's a report that the Select Board, the Collins Select Board takes very seriously. I'll run through some of the general comments that I'd like to make this evening, but first and foremost, we'd like to hear from each of you. We've had one public forum. We intend to have others in the future. But certainly, please send us emails or provide comments in terms of the recommendations and findings within the report. So background on this, the town, we received a grant for the Collins Center from UMass Boston to conduct a review of the financial structure of our community. Wasn't the first time that we've had this type of a report conducted. Back in 2011, I commissioned the Division of Local Services as part of the Department of Revenue when I was a member of the board then with my colleagues to commission, to conduct a similar report, if you will. The final report is, provides 19 interrelated recommendations. It's posted on the town's website. And this report was provided to the Select Board in June of, of this past year. The recommendations are broken on two broad categories. Financial structure, find, financial structure, excuse me, findings and recommendations, and financial operations, findings and recommendations. The Select Board reviewed this report as presented by Steve Cirillo, who was part of the team from the Collins Center that conducted this review and dozens of interviews and any number of individuals within our community. The board subsequently went through a prioritization scheme. I believe that's also been posted. If not, we will, we will post it in which we took the 19 recommendations and we undertook a prioritization scheme. Scheme in terms of, we rated it one, two, or three next to each of the recommendations. One was to undertake the recommendation in fiscal '23, which is this year, if possible. Two was undertake in fiscal '24, one to two years out, and three was to undertake or review and consider the recommendation in 2025 or later, three to five years. That, that prioritization scheme was somewhat consistent, frankly, amongst all three members of the board. And again, as I stated, we'll post that if it hasn't been posted. The basic summary of this report, as stated by Steve Cirillo, I think his comment was, Belmont is one of the most decentralized communities in Massachusetts. And perhaps the most decentralized, unclear whether we are or not, measured by the number of independently elected boards and positions. And further, the Collins Center, and frankly, ladies and gentlemen, very pointed recommendations, some of which were carryovers from the 2011 DLS report, that they believe the Collins Center and Steve Cirillo and others believes that this creates challenges in regards to our ability to effectively manage the financial issues of the community. Now, we've been able to do that, certainly in the years that I've served in the Warrant Committee and the Select Board, through, you know, our ability to collaborate, collaborate in an effective way with the School Committee, Warrant Committee, Capital Budget Committee, and other committees within town, the Town Treasurer. But certainly, the decentralization as pointed out by the Collins Center clearly creates challenges. We've been governing ourselves, ladies and gentlemen, since we were formed in 1859 in the same way. Perhaps it's time for a change. Next slide, please. Some of the recommendations that we've already implemented as part of, that were within the Collins Center report. In May 2022, we hired a Finance Director, Assistant Town Administrator Jennifer Hewitt, who has been leading the fiscal '24 budget development process, which is well underway. Portions of budget will be restructured for fiscal '24, and we've taken a new approach this year. If any of you have been a part of or listened in on some of the budget summits, we're really taking a more revenue approach, and it's consistent with the recommendation within the Collins Center report in terms of how we should approach construct of our budget. We've had a number of budget summits, summits, as I mentioned, and we intend to, next one scheduled is for December 14th, in which members of the Select Board, School Committee, Warrant Committee, Capital, Long-Term Planning, our Capital Committee will review budget development issues with a goal of achieving consensus earlier in the process, particularly around revenue. That's the approach we're taking. Administration has engaged a consultant. This is one of the recommendations in the report, Form and Weight Classification Study. I believe that's going to be finalized sometime this month or by the end of 2022, and we will take action on that, report out on that in early 2023. Our, our new Finance Director has started working with the newly established Comprehensive Capital Budget Committee. Initial results will be reported in the budget documents produced this spring. I would say, I'll speak on behalf of my colleagues and the board. I feel very good about where we'd be, you know, this is a new process we've adopted around budgeting, and so far, I think it's worked well. Certainly not perfect, but we're learning from the new budget process, and I feel very good about the approach that we're taking. Next slide, please. I'd say one of the strongest recommendations, or a key recommendation that the Collins Center provided was to transition from an elected to an appointed treasurer. This was originally recommended in the 2011 Division of Local Services report. We conducted a public forum on this topic in October. We did intend initially to have an article within this Special Town Meeting on this matter, and members of the board was not unanimous, if you, if you listened in, decided that we needed to listen more from the town residents of this community and actually educate them in terms of our point of view on this. We feel very strongly that now is, now is the time to move from an elected to an appointed treasurer. We've been blessed, frankly, by the service of our current Town Treasurer Floyd Carmen and others in the past. We've grown so large as a, as a town, and frankly, over 80% of the communities in this state of the 351 cities and towns would have an appointed treasurer. Some more to come on that. This is a typo here. I think it's, oh, that's right. I'm sorry. There's such second forum scheduled on January 19th, which is a Thursday evening, as the moderator indicated. We intend to have a Special Town Meeting on Monday evening, January 30, 2023, which the only article that will be at that Special Town Meeting is to ask whether, to ask the voters to approve, town meeting members to approve the transition to the, to a from an elected to an appointed town treasurer. If it is successful, if that article passes that evening, we've talked about this quite a bit in terms of the two-step process. We will then put on the ballot for the April 4, 2023 election. That should be '23 election. The, a referendum vote. We've had this in the past. If you recall, it was defeated in the past many, many years ago when Floyd first ran for treasurer. So again, Special Town Meeting, if that article is successful and has favorable action on January 30, 2023, we'll then move to a referendum vote on the annual town election. Our financial team, one of the other recommendations is to really develop a strategy around establishing permanent reserves. And we're going to discuss that at the annual town meeting next year. Once the initial '24 budget is built, the administration will begin reviewing local revenue sources with an eye towards updating and refining as needed. So So a lot of what the conference talked about is a need to sort of be prudent. We have been, to some extent, in establishing and developing permanent reserves for the future and developing a new sort of approach to budgeting. The group insurance commission will release its updated post-procurement rates in March 2023. At that point, administration, along with the board, will begin analyzing the potential to move employee health benefits to the GIC, beginning in fiscal twenty-five. We looked at this before, ladies and gentlemen. It didn't benefit us as a town, both the employer and the employees, but we're going to consider it again. We've made that commitment to our, all of our employees and the unions that we've, we've worked with. Clearly, this will involve discussions with our unions. Other recommendations, next slide, please. Recommendations with larger implications. We'll speak to the overall structure of government in Belmont. As I indicated, we've worked well since 1859 in terms of how we govern ourselves. Perhaps now is the time to consider a change this many years later. There will be time and considerable discussions and actions bound before coming, by coming, before they can be implemented. The Select Board feels very strongly, based on recommendations from the Collins Center, that we need to create a governing organization that is more centralized through the Select Board policy bylaws and our special legislation. We believe that we need to clearly define and strengthen the powers and duties of the Select Board and Town Administrator through Select Board policy bylaws and our special legislation. These are all recommendations from the Collins Center. I know I've heard from a number of residents in the community and seems to be out there that this is a power that it's not. It's a way to sort of centralize the way we sort of govern ourselves and be more efficient and effective around that. And potentially, this is a big word, potentially, transitioning all relevant elected non-policy-making boards, committees, and positions to appointed positions. We will not do this unilaterally, ladies and gentlemen. We will not do this unilaterally. We'll certainly seek guidance from all of the stakeholders in town. We'll seek guidance from all of you as town meeting members and from the residents of this community. So with that, Mr. Moderator, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palillo. Appreciate that. We'll now turn to the motion. Move that Article One be laid on the table. This concludes the reports under Article One, so I would ask for unanimous consent on this motion. Seeing no objection, the motion is passed unanimously. The special town meeting, one, as I explained before, will be in recess. We will now recess that meeting and call to order special town meeting, two. I'll just repeat quickly that we have three articles under special town meeting, two, which we will turn to momentarily and then return to the leaf blower bylaw. We do need to have a reading of the warrant again for this separate special town meeting. So Ellen, please.
Thank you again, Mike. And this time, I will not be reading the instructions, and I hope my microphone is solved. I do apologize for that. Pursuant to the warrant for the special town meeting, number two, to the help, to be held at seven P. M., November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, I, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk, do hereby certify that I gave notice of said meeting by posting an attested copy of the warrant and moderator letter to the Select Board requesting the town meeting be held by remote participation on the Town Clerk's official bulletin board in the town hall, on the town website, and at least five other places in town, fourteen days before the date of this meeting, in accordance with Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten of the General Laws and Section three zero dash one one zero A of the General Bylaws of the Town of Belmont. Furthermore, I do hereby certify that I gave notice of the special town meeting, number two, of November twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, by causing a copy of the warrant and the moderator's letter to the Select Board requesting the town meeting be held by remote participation to be sent to the town meeting members at least fourteen days before the date of this meeting, and by causing copies of the warrant to be made available at the public library and the Town Clerk's office and on the town website, all in accordance with Section three zero dash one one zero B of the General Bylaws of the Town of Belmont and the Representative Town Meeting Acts of nineteen twenty-six as amended.
Unmute. Thanks, Ellen. We now turn to the preliminary motion for this special town meeting, two. We need to do this separately because this is a separate town meeting. Move that the town meeting will meet and act on all matters on the warrant for this special town meeting, too, by means of the video and audio conferencing and voting technologies described in the moderator's October three, twenty twenty-two letter to the Select Board, posted with a warrant. So Mitch, do you want to open the polls? Take a vote on. Fifteen more seconds. We are waiting for Belmont media, so I'll give it a few more seconds. Okay. All right, let's close the voting. Show the tabulation. So vote is two hundred and, excuse me, two hundred and forty in favor, three opposed. We can quickly scroll through this. Thank you. Again, the final tally is two hundred and forty in favor, three opposed, no abstentions. We now turn to the order of articles. And the order of articles, as I've explained, will be in the following order, one, two, three. We'll now turn to the first of those. Supplemental budget for the Recreation Department. Mr. Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, will read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Move that the town raise and appropriate two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to supplement the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Recreation Department budget. If I could provide some brief comments, Mr. Moderator, I think you're amute.
Yes, let me just, excuse me, let me just insert, Mark, that for sake of simplicity, I'll just announce the votes of each of the committees after the motion's read.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I apologize. Yes, of course.
The, no, my fault. In any case, unanimous support from the Select Board and the Warrant Committee. So go ahead, Mark.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. So just some brief comments. And we'll also ask our Director of Recreation, Brandon Fitz, if he's with us this evening, and our Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Director Jennifer Hewitt, and perhaps run through some of these numbers. But let me just provide some background. This is really good news. This is good news. We anticipate transferring the sum of money for the rec, to the Recreation Department for the purpose of providing recreation progress for fiscal twenty-three. It is very much expected that program fees will cover this appro, this appropriation will have no impact whatsoever on the general fund or on our, on our tax rates. We've been oversubscribed this time in the programs. And the reason for that is that when we developed the budget in twenty-three, we did it during the winter of twenty-one and twenty-two, anticipating less participation because we were in the middle of so-called Delta Surge, if you will. And so we did, we were likely to overcommit on funding or appropriation to the Recreation Department. I must say, we really appreciate the leadership of Brandon Fitz, our new Director of Recreation. I think he's had a lot of good ideas, and the programs are really taking off for us in this community. Our results in twenty-two were stronger than anticipated. And, and therefore, there's been an increase in, in interest from twenty-two into as part of the fiscal twenty-three, in actually your calendar of twenty-two, which is fiscal twenty-three. We had the underwater pool was well attended, and there's been a significant increase in demand for both our fall and winter programs. As I mentioned, the two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is a supplemental budget request, which is what we need to do because we've already adopted the twenty-three budget. So we need to go back to town meeting, which is the appropriating body, to appropriate additional funds for programs, again, that have been oversubscribed to in order, in order for us to have the expenses to run those programs in which we will raise the necessary receipts for those programs to cover the two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The Recreation Commission unanimously supported the supplemental budget request. And the plan long term to sort of deal with this issue again is to consider the establishment of an enterprise fund or perhaps a revolving fund, not so much for fiscal twenty-four, but as we look out into twenty-three and start planning for a twenty-five budget, perhaps we'll consider, if we have a fall town meeting next year or the spring of twenty-four, establishing, establishing an enterprise fund, which I think makes abundant sense. I think you have generally support from the Select Board on that matter, and a number of other communities have considered that as well. So those are my preliminary comments. Again, it's a supplemental budget request. We believe very strongly that the programs that this will fund will be clearly, the receipts from the programs will clearly offset the two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars expenses. So with that, if the Assistant Town Administrator Jennifer Hewitt or Brandon Fitz have any additional comments and perhaps can be available to answer questions as well, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the staff, or should we open up for discussion?
I think we can open for discussion, Mike.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. So the motion's made, and you've heard rationale. So are there, is there any discussion from town meeting members? Ms. Olson.
Mr. Moderator, Thomasina Olson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five, Chair of the Belmont Council on Aging and also Chair of the Payson Park Music Festival, which is entirely privately funded. My comments relate to, first of all, I, I'm surprised that we do not have an enterprise fund already because Council on Aging has an enterprise fund. My second concern is we are looking at a recreation budget, which was initially approved at one point one million and serves, I'm sure, some percentage of the town. Whereas the Council on Aging's budget is only four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and serves thirty percent of the town. So I wanted to make those two comments for town meeting members to consider when they vote. Again, I am quite surprised that we don't already have an enterprise fund when COA has had one for several years. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Nicole Dorn, you are next.
Hi, excuse me, Nicole Dorn, Town Meeting Member from Precinct One. I'm curious if you've accounted for the fact that you're likely to lose additional revenue from the rink this year, given the weather and given the fact that we're already seeing challenges with keeping the rink open. As you may be aware, last night, the rink had to close because it was too warm, and we don't have the ability to keep the facility inside cool, to keep the ice cool. The ice failed. Hockey tryouts were canceled. It's likely that a number of programs that people paid for will have to be canceled. And I, I think you should assume that you will lose additional revenue, given the state of the rink. So I'd just like to hear, how have you accounted for that in these projections? And what will you do, given the fact that revenue will likely decline, given the state of the rink?
Thank you, Mr. Fitz. Someone else?
Mr. Moderator, I think Brandon could answer that. I'm happy to supply a response as well. But Brandon, if you could.
Sure. My name is Brandon Fitz. I'm the Recreation Director. Yeah, thank you for the comment. The rink, we do have some anticipated loss in revenue built into our budget with the warm weather we've had beginning of the season with the rink. Certainly, as the season goes on, we're going to play it by ear and hope for the best. But I think with any loss of revenue for the wing, there is sort of an equal decrease in expenses that accounts for that as well. So I, I see Patrice is jumping on here, so she can chime in more to that, but that would be my response.
Thank you, Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I just wanted to answer the question, which is, yes, we did factor in some loss of revenue due to some issues in opening and delaying the rink. So that is factored into this number.
Thank you. Bill Anderson, you're next.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to make it clear. Bill, identify. I apologize, Mr. I apologize, Mr. Moderator. Anderson, Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. I just want to reiterate or ask for clarification. The two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of additional revenue will not affect or increase the twenty twenty-three or in future year tax levy. Is that correct?
Mr. Palillo.
Mark Flo, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. And Patrice can respond on this as well. Bill, no, this is, the two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is not tax receipts. It's program fees. That's, that's, I believe that's the case, Patrice and Brandon. So the, for the programs that we will, that have been oversubscribed to, the fees associated with those programs will not become part of the tax levy or base. Patrice?
So what you're seeing, Bill, and as we explained, oh, sorry, sorry, Mike. Yes, Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. As we have explained in, in, in prior meetings, that this is, this is estimated revenue coming in and estimated expenses coming out. If we don't expend as much or we take in more than we anticipate, it will flow to free cash at the end of the year.
Thank you.
But these are fees related, Patrice, they're not taxes, they're not tax receipts.
That is right. That is right.
Thank you, Bill Anderson, Precinct Two. Thank you. I, I, I am aware of those prior discussions. I just wanted to make sure that everybody in town meeting had the opportunity to hear that as well. Yeah, thank you, Bill, for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are four people in line. Corinne McQ Olmstead, Jack Weiss, Judy Fines, and Tommy Olson, who has already spoken on this topic.
Thank you. Corinne Olmstead, you're next.
Thank you, Corinne McQ Olmstead, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. When we received the materials in advance of town meeting, this slide had, the top half of it had the revenues and the bottom half had the programs with the total expenses, listing salaries, administration, the rink, the pool, et cetera. The slide that we're looking at right now lists, the top and the bottom are the same. Is there an error? Hello?
I'll turn to Jennifer Hewitt, our Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Director, to answer your question.
Thank you.
Yes, apologies for that. Thank you for, for mentioning that. There was a late.
Jennifer, please identify yourself.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jennifer Hewitt. I'm the Assistant Town Administrator slash Finance Director. I, there was a, staff made some changes to the slides this, today at the, the last minute. And I reviewed it. I'm homesick today and did not have a chance to. I did not look at it as closely as I should have, so I apologize for that.
Do we have a slide available, Jennifer, that we can throw up here that shows the expenses associated with the two eighty-four?
I would defer to.
No, we, we do not.
You don't have that, Mike? Okay.
No. Any, I'm looking at the list here. Chris Doyle? Ms. Doyle, did you raise your hand?
Yes, but it was to speak. I don't know that I was next in line, though.
You were, you were because, Jason List, I see, because Ms. Olson has spoken already.
Okay. I just wanted to rise in support of this. This is.
Identify Chris.
Chris Doyle, thank you. Yep. Chris Doyle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six now. I just wanted to rise in support of this. This is funding going in and out. I just wanted to rise in support of this. This is funding going in and out. We're on track to, I know the town is on track to migrating to either a revolving fund or an enterprise fund structure. They're evaluating both and it's terrific that the Council on Aging provides one of several models for how to do that well. And I know the Recreation Commission has been working toward that goal and the success of the program will help that to be successful. So I just wanted to rise in support of this, which is not, no financial impact on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Weiss, you had your hand up. Did you take it down deliberately? I guess you did. Fine. Thank you. So Ms. Olson, you can speak again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Thomasina Olson, Chair, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, Chair Council on Aging and Chair of Payson Park Music Festival. And I, I raised that, well, that's irrelevant at the moment, but something that Ms. Garvin said, I need to question. In my understanding of enterprise funds are the money goes, it comes in and it goes out, that Ms. Garvin suggested that leftover money would go to free cash. My understanding of free cash is that's a budgetary item. Essentially, that would expand our budget. So I, I'm not clear. I thought, you know, it was a wash, but.
Mr. Moderator, if I can just respond to that, please?
Yes.
Mark Palillo, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Tommy, first and foremost, we do not have an enterprise fund for the Recreation Department, as you pointed out a couple of times in your prior speech. So the, what I think Patrice was talking about, and she can clarify, is that to the extent that our receipts exceed whatever appropriation, the 284 expenses we have, those receipts will flow to free cash. So that is not a budgetary impact. So the intent, the plan here is, and the expected plan is that this additional appropriation of $284,000, it's an appropriation for expenditures that we anticipate based on the oversubscription to programs within the fiscal 23 budget year in which we receive fees associated with those programs. We expect all of the fees to, to at least match 284. I think what Patrice has indicated, to the extent that those fees exceed the 284, those additional receipts will in fact flow to free cash.
Mark, you became mute. No?
No, I didn't. No, I don't think so. So Patrice, I don't know if Ms. Garvin has any additional point of view, but that was the point of view that she was expressing.
All right. I think we've covered that issue and I don't see any other hands. So let's go to a vote on this motion under Article 1. If you approve of this motion, vote yes. If you oppose, vote no. And of course, you can abstain. So the polls are open. I should explain, on emergency votes, we did have three emergency votes on the last preliminary motion. We're not going to take the time of all of us to recalculate, to wait for those and then recalculate the total. But those votes will count and they'll be part of the public record in the Town Clerk's office. Now, obviously, if there were some very close vote, we would wait and include them, so we would know the outcome. But not when it's 240 to 3. Belmont Media has joined us, so we'll now, in a few more seconds. So let's close the polls. Mitch? McQ, final vote is 235 in favor, 5 opposed, 8 abstentions. Thank you. And Mitch, you want to scroll here? Great. Thank you. Now turn to Article 2. And please put up the motion. I'll say in advance of Mr. Dash reading this motion that the Select Board and Warrant Committee both voted unanimously in support of this motion. Mr. Dash?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Dash, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Article 2, Reduced FY 2023 Debt Service Appropriation, Moved That the Town Reduced the Appropriation for Principal Debt and Interest in the FY 2023 Budget From $15,778,851 To $15,243,002. If I may briefly explain, this is a technical change that results in actually a lower tax bill for FY 23. As with the last article, this deals with the current budget year we're in. And since Town Meeting voted the budget this past spring, any changes to it can only be made by Town Meeting, so here we are with you again. The staff made a late adjustment, as you can see on the screen, to the debt service authorization due to the third phase of debt for the high school borrowing that was issued in June 2022, and the wrong number was used. We apologize for that. The error was detected in October, however, and a correction was added to this special Town Meeting warrant before you now. And the staff will be finalizing the submission to the Department of Revenue for the FY 2023 tax rate next week. And this correction will be incorporated, so it's important that we vote it now. As overall, the main thrust of this is it's a, it's a small technical error correction, well, small relatively to the overall budget. And if we do not correct it, we will be forced to overtax people, which we do not want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dash. Discussion on this motion. Seeing, seeing none? Let's go to a vote on the motion under Article 2. Mitch, you can open the polls. If you favor this motion, vote yes, oppose no. So Belmont Media is with us now, so 15 more seconds for voting. All right, let's show the tally, please. The final tally is 248 in favor, no opposed, and one abstention. I don't think we need to scroll at this point. Let's go directly to Article 3. So in this case, I will record the, report the votes. The Select Board, Warrant Committee, and Community Preservation Committee all have voted unanimously in support of this motion. Elizabeth Deon, who was Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, will read the motion and make a brief presentation.
Elizabeth Deon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2, and Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, Moved That $206,300 Be Appropriated From the Fund Balance Reserved For Historic Preservation Of the Community Preservation Fund And $60,000 Be Appropriated From the Undesignated Fund Balance Of the Community Preservation Fund For A Total Appropriation Of $266,300 For The Town Hall Complex Slate Roofs As Described In The Community Preservation Committee Report To The 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Good evening. In my brief remarks tonight, I will review the history of this project and explain why there is such a significant increase in the requested amount. This is an off-cycle supplemental funding request to repair the slate roof of Town Hall. The Community Preservation Committee has a specific list of requirements for such off-cycle requests. This application meets those criteria such that we unanimously recommend it to Town Meeting. Can we please show Slide 2? Annual Town Meeting first approved this project and appropriated $100,000 from the CAPA fund in spring 2019. The purpose of the proposed repairs was to replace broken slates in order to make the roof watertight and prevent future damage from water infiltration. However, we then learned that the Town Hall chimneys also required significant repair, which needed to happen prior to roof repair, as falling brick could further damage the slate tiles. Work on the roof was postponed, and in the spring of 2020, Annual Town Meeting appropriated $125,000 to repair at the Town Hall chimneys. Unfortunately, before any of these repairs could happen, Belmont's prior facilities director left, and in the midst of the pandemic, most repair work was suspended. When David Blaisen, current facilities director, was finally able to put this project out to bid last spring, he received a single bid for $333,000, substantially more than the appropriation of $100,000, so Belmont couldn't accept the bid. Also, Mr. Blaisen has indicated that winter is typically a more competitive time to bid a project as contractors have not yet filled their spring and summer schedules. Our hope is that multiple competitive bids will result in lower pricing, but we won't know that until we receive the actual bids. The current application requests $266,300 in addition to the $100,000 that Town Meeting previously approved. Several factors drive this cost increase. First, the initial request was merely an estimate provided by the prior facilities director. No one questioned the amount at the time, but in hindsight, it appears to have been grossly inadequate. Can you please show Slide 3? Second, the historic roof is large and complicated, and the replacement slate must be an exact match to satisfy historic preservation requirements. There are areas where the sheathing deck must be replaced to avoid future cracking. This type of work requires scaffolding, which is a time-consuming and labor-intensive method to access a building. Third, the project now includes a 10% contingency on top of the initial bid in order to account for inflation and potential supply chain issues. In recent years, the Community Preservation Committee has advised projects applicants to request the maximum amount reasonably necessary to complete their project. It's ultimately less expensive to finish a comprehensive project in a timely manner rather than doing projects piecemeal or suspending a project and asking Town Meeting for additional funds. This is a case in point. If bids come in below the appropriated amount, then any excess returns to the CPA fund after completion of the project. Again, it ultimately costs Belmont less money to provide adequate project funding at the outset with the hope of a turnback later. One final note, this project repairs the roof but does not change the underlying structure. Several people have inquired about insulating the roof. This would require reconstruction to provide adequate airflow. Also, it would allow snow to stay on the roof longer, creating more weight and strain on a roof that is already over 100 years old. Again, the scope of this project is repair, not a complete reconstruction, which would be significantly more expensive and involved. With cost in mind, can we please bring up the final slide? Each summer, the Community Preservation Committee updates Belmont's CPA plan and posts it on our webpage. This year, we included information for the first time about anticipated funds that would be available to appropriate at annual town meeting. As you can see, there are currently sufficient funds available to repair Town Hall's slate roof. Unfortunately, we anticipate receiving more final project applications than available funding for fiscal year 2024, an issue that we'll address at spring town meeting. However, roof repair is an urgent need and a critical infrastructure investment that should be a high priority for Town Meeting now. David Blaisen and I are available to answer further questions. Thank you.
Pardon me, I was muted. Thank you, Ms. Deon. We'll now open it up for discussion from Town Meeting Members. I see no hands, so let's proceed immediately to a vote on the motion under Article 3. So let's open the polls. If you support the motion, vote yes. Oppose, no. 15 more seconds on the voting. All right, let's close the polls and see the tally. So the final vote is 244 in favor, 2 opposed, 3 abstentions. Can scroll the results. All right. Thank you. Final total minus any emergency votes is 244 in favor, 2 opposed, 3 abstentions. So thank you very much. We now turn to a motion to dissolve Special Town Meeting 2. Moved to dissolve the Special Town Meeting 2. I would ask for unanimous consent for this motion, since we have no further business under this Special Town Meeting. Right? I see no objections, so the motion to dissolve Special Town Meeting 2 is approved unanimously. We now reconvene, as I explained, Special Town Meeting 1. And the one article under that remaining is for tonight's. And the one article under that remaining is for tonight's work is the leaf blower bylaw. Let me explain the process here and then I'll introduce Mr. Epstein. Uh, what we're going to do after the reading of the motion by Mr. Epstein is have a presentation. Uh, Mr. Libby and Mr. Becker, who were part of the working group. Will, uh, supplement, uh, comments from Mr. Epstein as to the rationale and purpose of this, uh, bylaw amendment. Uh, then, uh, we will turn, as we always do, to amendment, to amendments under this, uh, proposed change. Uh, there were two amendments. Uh, one, uh, was with, uh, by Mr. Hartley was withdrawn. Uh, I have given him the courtesy of it after we have the presentation of explaining briefly. Why he decided to draw, withdraw his amendment. We will then turn to Mr. Robotham, who has an amendment that we will consider. He will make his presentation on the amendment. If there's any brief rebuttal from, uh, Mr. Epstein, we will then turn to a discussion of the amendment. Once we have dispensed with the amendment up or down. We then return to a discussion of the, uh, general bylaw, the main motion, uh, amendment. As read in a moment by Mr. Epstein. So that discussion will be, uh, as the bylaw is amended or not amended. And then that would, uh, that discussion and vote would complete action on the bylaw. So this is the standard procedure that we have the initial presentation on the overall purpose. But then we turn to the amendments, dispense with the amendments and then come back to the discussion overall. So with that, um, uh, Mr. Epstein, want to, uh, read the. Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roy Epstein, member of the Select Board and Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. Article Three, moved that the town establish a general bylaw titled Leaf Blower. As printed in the Special Town Meeting warrant.
Um, Mr. Epstein, let me insert here that the vote that the Select Board voted unanimously in support. And the Bylaw Review Committee has approved both the main motion and the amendment as to forms and places. With that, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roy Epstein, member of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Uh, members of Town Meeting may remember that complaints about leaf blowers started to come into the Select Board in considerable number. In the summer of twenty twenty, when a lot of people were at home, uh, when COVID started. That led to the Select Board, uh, trying, uh, to try to respond to these concerns. In the form of a, and a, an amendment to the bylaws that would regulate leaf blowers. Uh, this turned out to be somewhat challenging and, uh, I and Adam Dash, uh, undertook several drafts of a bylaw that wasn't quite satisfactory. And finally, this past spring, I volunteered to, uh, try it again and this time. I asked a number of residents who were quite knowledgeable and also very concerned about this issue to help me. Put a bylaw together, which we did, uh, by the middle of May. With the intention of, uh, presented at the Town Meeting in June. But the Town Meeting in June became so busy with other things that we decided to defer it until this November, uh. Partly because of time and also because the bylaw wouldn't take effect until twenty twenty-three anyway, so nothing is really lost by adopting it now. Uh, if you've read the bylaw, you'll see it has a number of, uh, provisions that seem complicated, but the overall, uh, intent is actually quite straightforward. And to explain what the bylaw is getting at. I would ask, uh, two of my partners on this, Klaus Becker from the Energy Committee and Jeff Lubian from the Warrant Committee to, uh, uh, go through a brief presentation that we put together. Uh, Jeff, are you going first or is Klaus?
Klaus is gonna go first, but I'll introduce myself so I don't have to during halfway through the presentation. Uh, Jeff Lubian, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Member of pre, Town Meeting Member of Precinct Seven, a member of the subgroup that worked on this bylaw and representing homeowners that own their, and use their own gas-powered leaf blowers.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, Klaus Becker, I am on the Energy Committee. I am also the person doing, uh, yard work. Uh, if it's, um, uh, heavy duty at the home, so I use, um, uh, garden equipment. And, um, uh, I have been motivated by constituents, uh, to, uh, be active on this, uh, front, so I'm reacting. Um, to, uh, public pressure, as I'm sure other people, um, in the, um, uh, in Town Meeting who will have, uh, seen, uh, the, um, uh, Dr. Epstein, he, he touched on the noise problems and it really is quite striking. I was wa, I was walking in the other reservoir the other day. And there were three people, uh, blowing leaves in our garden and it, um, was louder than when I'm standing next to a Cessna one seventy-two. And which, uh, I take flying lessons, so it's really, it's, it's really quite impressive. And, um, and this is why there's been such a reaction, uh, to leaf blowers across the co, uh, across the country. More than ten percent of Americans now live in a place where leaf blowers are regulated or will become, uh, regulated, uh, by law. So there's absolutely nothing, um, particularly, uh, unusual or, uh, you know, um, uh, you know, forward. On what we are trying, um, to do here. So. Just to put some numbers on it, the, um, wall penetrating noise and pollution is incredible. And the three gentlemen who were blowing leaves the other day, none of them were wearing, um, uh, air protection. And, um, also the pollution is staggering. These two-stage motors have no, uh, catalytic converters or anything. And an analysis by Edmonds dot com, a, a website that, um, reviews automobiles. Um, said that they pollute more in half an hour than a heavy-duty pickup truck driver that drives from San Francisco to Boston. So it's really, it's really quite a burden, uh, for anyone, uh, with asthma and, and other respiratory diseases. So, um, the, um, uh, let's go to the next slide, please. So, uh, a couple of years ago, we started thinking about what could be done. And, um, there's actually a lot of towns, as I mentioned, who have various forms of regulations. We looked at those. But it's important to, uh, not just rush for these kinds of things where, um, you know, uh, people, um, have special concerns. And, um, there's also people whose livelihoods are, uh, impacted. So we put together a team that involved Town Leadership, Roy Epstein. Um, a couple of, uh, people, um, uh, that's, um, Jeff Lubian, myself and Ian Troglias. And a, a successful businessman, Dante Musioli, who owns a large landscape, um, company. So that way we were covering, uh, politics and money and, uh, environmental concerns as well as the business of, uh, of, um, uh, doing yard work. And, um, we met over a number of times and, um, basically handled over, uh, what this, uh, should look like in order to make it, uh, you know, something that everybody could support. And I think it's important for Town Meeting to understand that what you're looking at here is, um, is the result of a compromise. Um, that everybody can, um, uh, could agree to. So. Um, you know, it's easy to come and say, well, this could have been better or that could have been better, but that's the nature of, uh, compromise. And the bottom line is that in a few years, all the leaf blowers in town, uh, will be a lot more quiet and they won't be, uh, put, uh, they won't be stinking up, uh, the, the neighborhoods. So, uh, I will, uh, handle or hand the, um, baton, uh, to Jeff Lubian, who will walk you through these specifics, um, high-level specifics of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Klaus. Uh, Jeff Lubian, Town Meeting, Precinct Seven. Uh, so Article Three, the main provisions, so these are summaries of the, of the article. It's detailed in the bylaws that we're proposing, but. Ultimately, as Klaus mentioned, that we will be a complete ban on gas-powered leaf blowers in, beginning in January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, we picked a three-year runway. There was some discussion about a two-year runway, but, um, I felt and some others did that. The technology is catching up, um, but we felt we wanted to build a cushion in to give people time to, for homeowners to budget. Uh, switching to an electric leaf blower, also allow costs to come down and technology to improve. If you've noticed in most home improvement centers now, the majority of lawn mowers are electric, far away the ones that are gas-powered. Where only a couple of years ago was the opposite. That's beginning, that's, we're now seeing that trend in other lawn equipment, weed whackers and leaf blowers. So we feel that this is a reasonable time horizon to give everyone time to adjust. But starting in twenty twenty-three, we understand there's some adjustment periods and there's some things we'd like to enact right away. So first is we'd like to prohibit the use of gasoline leaf blowers on residential properties by commercial landscapers between May thirteenth and September thirtieth. Most of the noise complaints were coming from the dense residential areas where contractors were using obviously gas, um, landscapers' gas-powered leaf blowers. We like to limit that and we chose those days because that's when the foliage and the grass kibbleings are lightest. And the current, we believe through consensus that the technology exists currently for landscapers to clean up that type of debris. Using, um, electric leaf blowers. We, we agreed that in early spring and in the fall, denser, heavier wet leaves. There are solutions out there for electric, but they're not as, uh, readily available yet. And so therefore we thought a phase-in period would make sense to use gas power during that time period. Limit the number of leaf blowers used simultaneously on a resident property. The number depends on the size of the property. Limit applies to both gas and, and, uh, battery-operated leaf blowers. So this is spelled out in the bylaw based on the size of the property, the number of leaf blowers that we felt. Working together would be realistic to, to manage getting the job done in a timely manner and ma, I mean, and. Preserving costs for the, the landscapers, but also not overdoing it and overbearing the neighborhood with loud noise. Leaf, even electric leaf blowers will present noise and controlling the noise is really controlling the le, the, the number of leaf blowers. And so this will go in place starting this year and will continue, uh, forever. Uh, with the real switch happening in twenty twenty-six of just no longer allowing gas leaf blowers. And then, uh, list on the town's website will, will show how many leaf blowers can be used for each relevant property. So there'll be information available for you to look up your property and understand what, what, where your property falls within this bylaw. Next slide. So during the phase-out period, so during twenty twenty-three, restrictions are focused on residential properties. Single-family condos and two-tate unit, uh, multifamilies. Again, as I mentioned earlier, this is a source of nearly all the noise complaints that were her, heard since, um, many of us have gone remote. The twenty twenty restrictions do not apply though, and this is addressed, uh, this is being addressed in the, um, amendment to actually include these properties in this phase-in period. But we felt that these properties, town property, cemeteries, state property, such as Beaver Brook. MBA churches, private schools, golf courses and large apartments. Uh, example, the Royal Belmont. Should have a phase, should be, have time to phase into the twenty twenty-six, uh, time horizon. One of the reasons is fewer little noise complaints for these locations because they don't tend to be in re, and densely res, uh, residential areas. Also, there's concerns about the suitable battery power. Um, to be able to execute in a timely manner to get these areas cleared. And then also difficulty of enforcement. So really, we are collectively, uh, not in favor of the amendment. Because we, we, it was a tough decision, but again, we're looking at a compromised time period here. We're trying to allow some of these larger, um, uh, properties or businesses to, to adjust over time. And then starting in January twenty twenty, use the gas-powered leaf blowers are not allowed anywhere in Belmont. I will also say that the town currently is going to be using gas leaf blowers. They're not going to be replacing any of those gas with future gas leaf blowers. And they will aim to be, they will work over the next few years to be compliant in twenty twenty-six. Next slide.
Right.
And I think that's it. Open to questions. Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Thank you for the presentation. We now turn to, as I explained, to the amendments. And as I said, I wanted to extend a courtesy to Richard Hartley. To make brief comments on his decision to withdraw his amendment. If he would so like. Mr. Hartley, are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Wood Merritt. Rich Hartley from Precinct Three. I very quickly, knowing everyone's time is important, wanted to just update you on, on originally filing this, uh, immediately before the deadline. I was unaware of a lot of the work that this committee had, had been doing through the spring and summer with a diverse, uh, number of stakeholders. We, you just heard the report. The amendment was filed based on feedback I had directly from neighbors of mine in Precinct Three who were most concerned about the noise. And after filing, uh, before the deadline and then further conversations with the team, um, who had worked on this, there was. Unfortunately, my point ring. Um, there was, um, a lot of compromise that went into the, the motion that's before us today. And that's what I wanted to reflect, not only the, the timeline to get to not having the noise, but also, uh, respecting the impact that this would have financially to, to local small business owners. So this came from conversations, uh, particularly with the Select Board Member, um, Epstein and, and reflecting the work this committee has done. So. I'm withdrawing the amendment in support of the compromises that have been put forth, um, and we'll see how that it goes over time. If we really need to address noise on Saturday mornings as invasive at seven in the morning, then that's probably best done through a holistic noise adjustment by law, not just a leaf blower by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. We now turn to Mr. Robotham, who has filed an amendment before you. Uh, Mr. Robotham, uh, please read the motion and then go ahead with your presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Robotham, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Moved to strike the words with a property type classification of zero one three or one zero one through one 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 comma.
Go ahead. That, that is the extent of the motion, um, the amendment, but go ahead and explain. And I think it'll be, it will become clear what, uh, what you're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the purpose of this amendment is really quite simple. It extends the proposed bylaw to all the properties in the town instead of only residential properties. Now, many of us in our small town live either near to or adjacent to commercial or town properties. The bylaw as written kind of bypasses and excludes all those neighborhoods for the next three years. Commercial and town properties are spread throughout our small town, each one with plenty of residential neighbors. And we have all experienced the roar of multiple leaf blowers next door or across the street. Waking us up and interrupting our phone calls and meetings. I recognize and appreciate that this amendment will be opposed. It's not easy to reach consensus and draft a bylaw that treats everyone fairly. So to avoid a lot of back and forth discussion, I will provide answers in advance to some of the arguments that will be made to oppose this amendment. Um, first argument will be that our cemeteries, schools, playgrounds and golf courses simply won't survive without gas-powered leaf blowers. Running all year round. And my only response to that is really? Okay. Second, it will be asserted that nobody has ever complained about leaf blowers on commercial property bothering residential neighbors. And I've been told that the only complaints have come from residential-only neighborhoods. I'm sorry, this is categorically not true. The third argument will be that this amendment goes way too far and will break a very delicate compromise carefully negotiated with a group of landscaping companies. During that negotiation, it must have been decided that the noisiest and most polluting leaf blowers need to go somewhere in town. Until all these devices have been fully amortized and I guess our neighborhoods are it. Again, I appreciate that it's not easy to craft a bylaw and I'm certain that everyone has the best intentions. But intentional or not, the net result is that some of our neighborhoods will be treated as far more equal than others. And the rest of us are left to wait three years before the bylaw is applied equally to all. So this amendment fixes that problem. This is a question of fairness. Why should residents who happen to live near to or adjacent to commercial or town properties be excluded from the benefits of this new bylaw? Why should they have to wait three more years for a benefit being extended? Why should they have to wait three more years for a benefit being extended to the residential only neighborhoods in town? So I want to end by thanking everyone who worked diligently to craft this new bylaw. It will eventually reduce noise and pollution throughout the town, and that is certainly a good thing. And I will be enthusiastically supporting the main motion. But I respectfully request support for this amendment and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Robotham. Um. Mr. Epstein, did you uh want to record, report the vote of the select board on this amendment, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Roy Epstein, the member of the select board, uh Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, the select board. Unanimously recommends unfavorable action on the amendment.
Right, thank you. And did you have any, this was covered in the presentation, but did you have any? Further thoughts before we open it up?
Y- y- yes, and, and uh. With the question of fairness, I think Mr. Robotham's characterization of the bylaw is somewhat. Unfair in itself. The issue is not. That the town won't survive somehow. Uh, our thinking, just to focus on the town for a moment. Is that DPW is extremely stri- strapped financially and in staffing. If we, they, they own about thirty or thirty-five. Gas powered units now. If we prohibited them. Uh, immediately. They would have to replace all of those. Right now, and the, but there is a budget constraint. That is significant, and if DPW is. Slowed down and doing heavy work, yes, the cemeteries are large, there are many acres with all sorts of debris on them. If they're slowed down. Because. Uh, battery powered leaf blowers can't do the job or rates can't do the job. It's a cost to the town. That's why we have a phase out period when better units will be available, we think for sure in twenty twenty-six. That we did strike a compromise because there are these competing considerations. When you have large properties that are not close. To residential neighborhoods at all. Uh, we thought it was reasonable to structure the bylaw. Uh, as we did. Uh, we know there are complaints, not just from residential properties, but the vast majority of the complaints have been from the desolate ne- uh settled. Neighborhoods, and that's why we focused the bylaw as we did, but I'd like to uh also invite Klaus to respond uh on this point. Uh, Klaus, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Becker, uh briefly, because I want to give participants a chance.
Very appreciate the, um, uh, this is Klaus Becker, Precinct Five. I um, want to point out that in. Uh, California, the sale of um, uh, uh, polluting yard equipment will be outlawed. Starting in a little under two years, and that's important in this case because the kind of equipment that I use on big surfaces like a golf course. Is currently not available. You know, they might have four wheeled um, uh devices that blow uh leaves. Whereas the residential area devices are currently available and will be um, you know, much more broadly available as California sets the tone. So it's not only, uh, you can't just say fairness, it's also just a, a matter of practicality that uh. These big properties were from where there are a few complaints, they, they need different kinds of equipment. And that's gonna be there in a couple of years, but it's not there today.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Alan?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. At this time, there are seven people with their hands up. Sumner Brown, Heather Ivesta and Emily Peterson are the first three.
Thank you, uh, Sumner Brown. Are you there, Sumner? Let me. Summer, are you there? Let me come back to you. Heather Ivesta.
Good evening, Heather Ivesta, Precinct Eight. Um, I want to thank you for the presentation tonight, but I just want to talk through a few items. Um, you know, in doing a little bit of research, it seems that the only difference between a gas powered and an electro powered. Um, leaf blower is about five decibels. Um, and the noise produced by an electric, yeah, I'm sorry, the gas powered is similar to that of your home washing machine. I find it very discouraging that our community is spending so much time on this issue. We have many challenges in town. Um, with the crisis in the, the world today, I just can't understand how leaf blowers have consumed so much time. And energy for our town tonight. Uh, I do think that there'd be a better approach.
Thank you.
And I, I'd like to propose. That we look at giving incentives to landscapers to utilize uh maybe quieter and more energy efficient methods. Um, and give them time rather than forcing them and having a timeline to achieve this. So I, I do not support this. Um. Bylaw tonight, and I hope that our community will give some deep thoughts to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to emphasize that the. Uh, comments now from town meeting members. Should be solely on the. Amendment proposed by Mr. Robotham. Then we will return to, once that's disposed of favorably or unfavorably. We return to a discussion of the main motion. The focus now of comments should be on. Mr. Robotham's amendment. Sumner Brown? Try again. Not sure what the problem is. Will, will keep coming back. Emily Peterson?
Hi, Emily Peterson, uh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Um, I have a question first and then a comment. Um, are the Belmont Public School properties included in the exemption? It seemed in the description. That private schools were specifically called out, and as I live across the street from the Wellington, I've noticed that it's not DPW. I believe that does the Wellington grounds. Um, but I just wanted to confirm whether our Belmont Public Schools are exempt. From this, because a lot of mem- a lot of our residents do obviously live around our schools. That's quite my question, and then I have a comment.
Mr. Epstein, did you want to?
Uh, Roy Epstein, member of the select board and. Town meeting member from Precinct Six. Uh. The Belmont Public Schools are town owned property and will not be included here. The. The uh bylaw as written applies only to residential properties.
Okay.
Thank you, Miss, Miss Peterson, you had a further comment, did you?
Yeah, well, I guess I have to say that I am disappointed that the weekend and holiday uh amendment was withdrawn. Um. I can tell you guys that they do the Wellington on Sunday mornings in the summer, and that's not very pleasant. When we have breakfast on the porch, but uh, you know, it uh, so I, I wish that that. That amendment could be reintroduced personally, but um, you know, I, I rise in support of, of um, the amendment. And also uh, the general motion, um, because I think that. We, there can be other solutions and um. Although I do respect that the DPW is understaffed, that was one of the, that was why I wanted to understand about the schools. And whether the DPW actually does the school grounds.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes, Mr.
Uh, Roy Epstein again, from the select board and town meeting member, Precinct Sixty. When I say DPW, I, I'm referring to the entire town effort, which is DPW facilities and schools, which is combined with. Facilities, everybody, the, the thirty units I refer to are used by all of these departments.
Thank you. Pardon me, miss. We, uh, Miss Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are an additional seven people with their hands in the air, um, other than Sumner Brown. Um, one, uh, Ji Yun Wong, PJ Looney and Judith Ananian Sarno are the first three.
Thank you, uh, Ji Yun Wong, you're up next.
Ji Yun Hong, Precinct Eight. Um, I do have a question as well about the schools. Um, when um are the leaf blowers used um in the school property? Is it uh in during school session or is there a commitment to do it when school's out? Because I can imagine that if it's during school session, you know, it may be more bothersome to a resident, but I bet it can be really a hindrance to education. Uh, if it's, um, if they can't hear the teacher with the leaf blower right next to the window.
Mr. Epstein, do you happen to know that?
Uh, Roy Epstein, member of the select board, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. Uh, I can't answer that question. What, what determines the scheduling on? All of these town projects, I can't say. It depends on circumstances.
Thank you. PJ Looney, you're next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, PJ Looney, uh, Town Meeting, Precinct Seven. Uh, couple, couple of questions, pretty straightforward. Um, first, these complaints, I'm assuming there's hundreds if not thousands of them. Do we have any idea? What the number is? This seems like a lot of effort went in, so do we have any idea? What's the number of complaints that we get annually? And are we able to tell if they're? Property, school, town related property versus residential property? That's, that's it.
Mr. Epstein?
Uh, Roy Epstein, uh, member of the select board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Uh, PJ, I did not count the number of emails, but there were dozens. Uh, many dozens. Uh, over the last two and a half years, and they were overwhelmingly from residents in residential neighborhoods.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, let's try Sumner Brown again, Sumner. Sorry, I'm having technology problems. I, I can hear you now, Sumner. Okay. Proceed without me, please. Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, Judith Sarno, next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Judith.
Thank you. This is Judith Ananian Sarno, Precinct Three. And I'm speaking in favor of Mr. Robotham's amendment. This amendment, I'm voting yes in fairness to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarno. Uh. Miss Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, uh, Town Clerk. At this point, there are five people with their hands in the air, and Michael McNamara, Amy Kirsch and Ada Baptista. Are the first three.
Thank you. Michael McNamara, you're next.
Uh, thank you, uh, Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, uh, Precinct Seven. Um, I just wanted to ask Mr. Roth Botham, um, sorry, I'm pronouncing your name wrong, my apologies. Um, if. One of the reasons maybe why. Just in, in my mind, as a town meeting member, I think that's logical to want to avoid having too much sound pollution or more importantly, like. Air pollution right next to residential ho- homes where there's a lot of people around, there tends to be a lot more kids, children and elderly people. So I'm wondering if maybe you could explain why he thinks that something like a graveyard or maybe, you know, some other private property. You know, townwide property would be the same as, let's say, a densely residential area when it comes to like air pollution, noise pollution. Like, so I want to sort of see where his thinking is on that, because for me, I can see why maybe you want to allow like graveyard where there's no people. Um, uh, being affected as opposed to something where it's a residential area that will have children, a lot of adults. You know, so forth and so on.
Thank you. Mr. Robotham, did you want to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Robotham, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Um, one of the things I tried to do was make the simplest change possible to this amendment. Um, I'd also like to keep people in mind that this does not ban. Gas powered leaf blowers all year round. It, it uses the same thing, same properties as, as the current bylaw. And um, you know, in terms of the other properties. Uh, this was the simplest way of making this amendment without it becoming incredibly complicated. And I think that um, you know, everybody deserves more peace and quiet. Um, including those of us who need to visit Belmont cemeteries on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Amy Kirsch.
Hi, Amy Kirsch, Precinct Eight Town Meeting Member. Um, I would like to speak in favor of. Uh, Robotham's amendment um to this and just say that we did. My family personally switched to electric this year for gas blowers and it is. Amazing to be able to have that capability that you could just recharge your battery. Um, so I think in the long term plan for DPW, it would make sense for them.
Thank you. Um. Ada Baptista.
Hi, this is Ada Baptista, Precinct Three Town Meeting Member, and I'm asking uh. To move the question, please.
Mr. Baptista is moving the question. Miss Cushman, how many people in line, please?
Mr. Moderator, there are two additional people with their hands up.
So we now vote here in a moment on the uh motion. To terminate uh debate. Uh, which requires a two-thirds support. So um, it's, do you want to open the poll? So you're voting on the motion to terminate debate? If you favor terminating debate, vote yes, opposed, no. And this is terminating debate on the uh, Robotham amendment. Just waiting for Belmont media, so fifteen more seconds. So let's close the poll and show the results on the motion to terminate debate. Motion is uh passed, one eighty, one eighty-two in favor, sixty-five opposed. That is, of course, more than two thirds. So I will scroll the uh. Results. The debate terminated, we will now go in a moment to a vote on Mr. Robotham's amendment. Once that vote takes place, we'll then return to a discussion. Of the main motion. Either as amended or not. All right. Thank you. So again, for the record, one eighty-two in favor, sixty-five opposed, so debate is terminated. So now we're going directly to a vote on Mr. Robotham's amendment. So to be clear. If you support his amendment to the main motion, vote yes. If you oppose his amendment to the main motion, vote no. Open the polls. Thank you. Fifteen more seconds for the voting. All right, let's close the poll and show the tally, please. So the amendment is passes by 123 to 114 with eight abstentions. But I want to make sure that there aren't any emergency votes or how many? Since this is close. Want to hold a minute on the scrolling. Ms. Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. I have two emergency votes on the Robotham amendment. Kathy Cohen voted yes, and Mary Kennedy abstained.
So that would be 124, yes. 114 opposed and nine abstentions. So that does, the amendment prevails. Let's do the scrolling. All right, thank you. So the final tally for the record is 124 in favor, 114 opposed, nine abstentions. So with that, as I explained, we go back to a discussion of the main motion as amended. Main motion has been successfully amended. So we are now discussing the main motion as amended. Ms. Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. There are four people who have their hands raised. If you don't mind, I'll read them all. Roger Ruble, Bill Anderson, Catherine Bonfiglio are the first three. Actually, now it's six people.
Thank you. I guess Mr. Robo put his hand down, I guess. On this, Miss Bonfiglio, please.
I lost my unmute button.
You're, you're, you're on, go ahead.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Catherine Bonfiglio, town meeting member precinct six. I also want to thank select board member Epstein and the group that crafted this bylaw. I am a retired pediatric nurse with experience caring for those with asthma. And I would like to put the focus of this bylaw on public health. I, in fact, would love to see our Board of Health issue a warning about these gas leaf blowers. I encourage everyone now to take a deep breath and imagine that breath full of toxins that the gas leaf blowers produce, such as formaldehyde, benzene, fine particulate matter, clouds of dust with pollutants, pollens, fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, dried animal feces, and sometimes demolition debris. I think you're all horrified. And yet that's what these machines do. There are medical studies on the negative health effects of even short term exposure to this small particulate matter. Let's put the, the machines, put the lungs of those operating these machines as well as anyone in the vicinity at risk for asthma and other lung problems. Here's a list from the Respiratory Health Association. Leaf blowers leave lungs vulnerable. Asthma, COPD, cardiovascular disease, and exacerbation of allergies. Burning oil and fuel, which they do in these two stroke engines, emits a number of harmful toxic pollutants, some of which are cancer producing. We also know that these engines emit lower frequency noise than the electric ones. This noise penetrates even walls, and it can cause hearing damage, headaches, and of course, stress, as we know from the complaints from our town residents. Gas leaf blowers identified as sources of harmful noise by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, the U.S. EPA, as well as the National Landscape Industry Association. And I heard that landscapers have to start at 7:00 AM, but I see students walking to school at 7:30 and 8:00, and it's not safe for them to breathe in this polluted air. It's not safe to exercise or take walks with children while the workers are using this, these machines, according to experts. We've heard how much CO2 from class, how much CO2 the pollution the leaf blowers produce here at a time of increasing climate chaos. And frankly, they're not even good for your lawn. So for the health of our children, probably our pets, and all of our residents, especially those with respiratory conditions, let's do the right thing for Belmont's health and pass this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McNamara?
Michael McNamara, town meeting member precinct seven. I just want to say, I think that, from my perspective, I understand this may be sort of a small step with restricting these leaf layers over a period of about three years. But I think that just even if we want to put aside some of the talk about the, the experts and about the, the leaf blowers, I think an average person can understand this very simply. They're very loud, they make a lot of noise. It is disruptive. It is disruptive if you have kids. It's disruptive if you're elderly and you're maybe a little bit more prone to feeling the noise or hearing the noise. And also, I imagine it's not great if you're elderly and you maybe have some lung issues, heart issues, whatever, and you don't want to have this very odorous, very sort of unpleasant sort of car exhaust type of smell right near you or near your kids or grandkids. And I don't think we need to go into too much depth to realize that most people would like this to be cleaner and less noisy or more restricted. So I think this is a relatively common sense over a couple of years process, which will allow people who are really into getting their lawns or their property swept from leaves or who are really concerned about the welfare and, and the, and the economic welfare of the sort of departments that help clean or help sort of facilitate cleaning of leaves that will give them enough time to adjust, transfer over to electric to have less noise and less pollution. So I think reasonably this is a decent, long term solution that can be phased in over a number of years that will allow even people who are relying on the leaf blowers for their livelihood to be able to make the transition to hopefully a cheaper, better, quieter, safer electric model. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman. This time there are nine people in order. Steve Rosales, Steve Evans, and Ian Watson are the first three.
Thank you. Steve Rosales, you're next.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Stephen B. Rosales, precinct eight, town meeting member. My questions and comments go to the issue of enforcement here. So it says the select board will choose the enforcing person. So I guess the first one is, is this an enforceable bylaw? Several years back, my memory was there was a, there was a bylaw seeking to ban smoking on playgrounds. And the then police chief got up and said that he's not going to enforce it. They don't have the staff nor the resources to do so. Because I, I personally have a philosophical issue with dealing with bylaws that are not going to be enforced or probably will not be enforced or selectively enforced. So who will be the enforcing person to be able to do this, given the short staff of the police department and the very short staff of the community development? So that's question number one. Second, see, I see that the property owner or property manager is the one that gets the ticket. Should there be a problem? Not the person that's actually operating the, the leaf blower. So my question then becomes, so if someone goes on vacation in the fall, takes a trip or goes out of town, and while they're away, somebody comes in, a landscaper removes leaves or does some landscaping, uses a gas leaf blower and gets a ticket or at least gets seen using it by the enforcing person to the extent they do, the property owner who's away and unaware of it and didn't operate it? That's the person that gets the ticket? Certainly doesn't seem fair to me. I would vote no. So those are my questions. I'd like an answer to those, please, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rosales. Ms. Garvin, do you want to take a first crack at enforcement? Then I'll turn to Mr. Epstein.
Hi, Chief Garvin, town administrator. I didn't know, Roy, if you wanted to take that.
Mr. Epstein, would you?
Yeah, Roy Epstein, member of the select board, town meeting member from precinct six. The bylaw says the select board will appoint an enforcing person. And if this bylaw is adopted tonight, that the select board will act on that. That person will be identified and will be appointed. Regarding the second question about the responsible party, there, or enforcement generally, there are two parts to that. One is that we have tried hard to make this as self enforcing as possible. If people have read the bylaw, they will see that there there will be a list maintained on the town website of landscapers who have pledged to comply with the idea that landscapers are free to sign up for that list. And residents would be encouraged to consult that list in picking a landscaper. If the landscaper really doesn't live up to it because of violations, then the select board has the right to remove that landscaper. That's all spelled out on the bylaw. In terms of making the property owner or the property manager the responsible party, there's really two reasons for that. One is that after discussing this with the police chief, they have compelling reasons not to make the landscaper the responsible party, which the police chief can explain in more detail if people are interested. Secondly, it was our view that the property owner is in the best position to specify to the landscaper the type of service they want and to monitor that landscaper. Note that the first penalty in an enforcement action, which I expect will be rare, is not a monetary fine, it's just a written warning and a talk to the, talk to the property owner to get them to instruct their landscaper to comply. So I actually am optimistic that the enforcement burden will be pretty small.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Steve Evans?
Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, Steve Evans, town meeting member precinct six. I'll support this motion, but I do share Mr. Rosales's concern around enforcement. If I understand what I just heard, I mean, it sounds like it'll be similar to other bylaws that we have where it's really up to the property owner to complain, I guess, to the town that there's a violation going on. And then the town comes out and either writes a letter or issues a citation. And in my experience, that, that kind of enforcement scheme results in uneven enforcement of the laws across the, across the town. As an example, there's a bylaw on the books that basically prohibits playing ball in the street. And my experience in my neighborhood is sometimes that's enforced, sometimes it's not. People play ball on, on the streets where there's not a lot of traffic in other parts of town, but not, you know, not where, where there's been enforcement or complaints. And I have a concern that, that, that facing what I've heard, that that's how this, this, this bylaw is going to play out. But as I said, I will enforce, I will vote for it, but with that concern.
Thank you. Mr. Rosales, did you have a follow up comment? I may have inadvertently cut you off.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I did have a follow up. Selectman Epstein referred to the police chief as being, could speak to why it would be the property owner and not the operator. So I guess I'd like to ask the police chief to, to explain his reasoning as to that. I'd also get, I'd like to probably ask a little more specific question as to who the select board that, that have voted on this would choose as the enforcing person. Because I think it makes a big difference.
I think that's an unfair question, but let's talk to the, let's have the police chief. Chief McIsaac, are you on? Chief McIsaac?
I'm sorry, Mr. Police Chief James McIsaac, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, I missed the question.
Mr. Rosale, well. Mr. Epstein? Do you want to repeat?
Yeah, Roy, Roy Epstein, chairman, member of the select board and town meeting member precinct six. Chief, I mentioned that discussing the enforcement of this bylaw with you some months ago, that you felt pretty strongly that the responsible party, if there was a violation, should be the property owner and not the landscaper. And that's why the bylaw was crafted as it was. And, and I said that you could provide more detail as to your, your reasons for that.
Yes, and this is, again, that's Police Chief James McIsaac. Though in our initial discussion, when we came up about enforcement of this action, I didn't think it was in the best interest of the town or the Belmont Police Department to be confronting people who may be undocumented workers, asking for IDs and that kind of, you know, in going down that kind of road, because things like that can, can, you know, if we, if we confront landscapers working and people don't have IDs, then we have to try to identify them. And I just didn't think it was something at that time that I wanted, and at this time, that I want my offices doing. I don't want to put them in that situation. And I don't think, I think as the type of community we are, we don't want to keep people, prevent people from working in our community. If they feel as though they're going to be confronted with, by the police if they're using a leaf blower or something like that.
All right, thank you, chief. Continue with Ian Watson?
There we go. Ian Watson, precinct three. Real quick on the enforcement piece, the plastic ban process. When I brought it up with the DPW, basically nobody had been assigned. They did not have the person employed. And so I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, we keep doing these, you know, smart, nice, you know, good things. And then, you know, we just don't have the bandwidth or budget or whatever it may be to follow through. And it's, it's a flaw, I think, in our town meeting process. Because, you know, it's all sort of upfront and, and then we get lost in the weeds in the back. And secondly, my electric leaf blower is super loud. So yeah, I don't know, maybe there's a decibel issue as opposed to a power source issue, but that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, town clerk. At this time, there are nine people with their hands up. Bill Trabelsy, Judith Ananian Sarno, Amy Checkaway are the first three.
Thank you. Bill Trabelsy, you're next. Thank you. Bill Trabelsy, you're next.
Hi, Bill Trabelsy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I'm hearing a lot of things, and I'll try not to go on too long, but having spent twenty-five or so years in environmental health and safety and exposure assessments, you know, some things just rub me the wrong way and throwing words around like cancer carcinogenic and toxic, you know, there's a dose component to all of these things and 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 hearing degradation, degradation. There's a dose component to everything. Coffee will kill you if you drink ten cups a day and or twenty cups a day. So how toxic? But I'm going to leave that aside. Couple of things. I live about thirty yards from the cemetery and and about ten yards from a house that's very close to me that gets landscapers and about twenty-five yards directly across the street. Personally, and this is anecdotal, obviously, I have never been bothered, and I'm a noise kind of nut. I've never been bothered by the emissions part. Let's talk emissions as far as the, the discharge from the combustion process. I I just have never smelled it, and it's, it's never bothered me. So I'm not sure where this is coming from. The other part is, yes, the others. So and they're, they're regular, the weekly, the, the homes that I'm referring to. The landscape, the cemetery, just yesterday, the day before, one of the workers was leaf blowing, and I was marveled at how quiet it was. I don't know if it was a new one. And this goes directly to the question that Mr. Watson just said is do we know the deltas between, let's say, a modern combustion? By delta, I mean, the difference between the DB, standardized DB measurements or sound pressure level measurements between a modern combustion and an equivalent powered, so we're comparing apples and apples, rechargeable one. Are we in the margins of difference here? Five decibels is, can be substantial, but at, at what distance for the worker? Yes. For somebody thirty, forty feet away, five decibels may not make that much difference. So there's a lot of mythology that's getting kicked around here that is possibly driving this. My, my other concern is, is that this, when I call taking it from Obamacare, the individual mandate, I, I, I don't see how individuals using very sporadically a gas-powered blower should be penalized and have to A dispose of their old one, which is not easy to do, and B buy a new one. When, when this is, this is going to amount to, I don't know, a three or four hundred dollar individual penalty, I suppose, for using your leaf blower, I don't know, three or four, five hours a month? I mean, a year. I don't know. I just don't understand why individuals, as opposed to the commercial aspect, have to be included in this. I know it's a feel-good thing. I know that's fine, but you're actually asking individuals to cough up some, some significant dollars. And I'll just leave it at that. I think Mr. Rosales got something, I agree with his sentiments as well as this, this investor earlier.
Thank you. Judith, Judith Ananian Sarno.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Judith.
Okay, this is Judith Ananian Sarno, Precinct Three. Mr. Moderator, my question is for the Director of DPW, if I'm permitted to ask him?
Yes.
Is he there? Mr. Markcott?
Yes.
Okay, so my question to Jay Markcott, Director of DPW, if this bylaw passes tonight, will you commit to us, to Town Meeting Members, that the town will not purchase any more combustion gas leaf blowers beginning tonight? Do we have your assurance on that?
Ms. Sarno, not sure that that's germane. I, I will ask Mr. Markcott if he wants to make a general comment. I don't believe that that's within the clear scope of this motion. Mr. Markcott?
Can't get in.
You're in. I can hear you. I, I can hear you, Mr. Mark.
Hi, Jay Markcott, DPW Director. If this was to pass tonight, then we would have to go to the Warrant Committee or Capital Committee to ask for some additional funding to basically replace all of our gasoline, small pieces of equipment that we use currently. I mean, we're, we're full, full-blown operations right now, doing leaf cleanup and the, the town between highway, park, cemetery, we have sixty-seven pieces of equipment that would fit into this category. So that would definitely be something that we would need to, or the Warrant Committee and Capital Committee for additional funding.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The reason I asked the question is, in letter G of the bylaw, it says effective January first of the twenty-three, the town shall not purchase or acquire combustion leaf blowers. That's why I asked the question. If it wasn't germane, I apologize. But I was trying to get at, between now and January first, will the town be buying any gas blowers? I'm not sure. I think I heard no.
I need to unmute myself. Ms. Sarno, I stand corrected. I think that is clearly within scope.
Thank you.
Amy Checkaway.
Hi, hi, excuse my voice. Amy Checkaway, Precinct Six. My question, Mr. Markcott was, I think, just beginning to speak to, which is that if anyone has an estimate of the financial implications of the amendment that was just passed in terms of the town implementation of this bylaw on, on this year's budget and next year's budget.
Mr. Markcott?
Hi, Jay Markcott, DPW Director. For for highway alone, I don't have the rest of DPW. So highway is thirty-six pieces of equipment. And rough estimates, we, we, we asked some of our contractors, our, our retailers about some potential pricing in the future. There's some retrofitting that we would have to get. We would have to get some charging stations and we'd have to get uniform batteries or or one type of company that would be able to carry the, you know, one charging station unit that we would need for all of our types of functions. And if we were to replace all of our gas right now, we have thirty-six pieces that are gassed right now in highway alone. That would be about a thirty thousand dollar cost right now if we were just change, stop everything gas and go to battery. There is a hundred and five units townwide. Highway is about thirty-six. Total DPW is sixty-seven. So just trying to give a ballpark as to what we're talking about here for numbers.
Thank you. Claus Becker, I recognize you.
Thank you. So, a
Identify yourself.
Yeah, Claus Becker, Precinct Five. So thirty thousand dollars, that's about a buck fifty per household in town, just to put it in in the right proportion. And I would say that the Capital Committee would probably look favorably at such a request since Town Meeting voted for the amendment and well knowing that we would have to replace, right, that we were clear about that. That's why we didn't support the amendment. But now Town Meeting has voted for the amendment, the Robotham Amendment. So, so by extension, you know, they're, they're supportive of this. And it's about fifty, I'm sure, but that'll, that'll work out. The I forgot the other thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the Town Clerk. This time, there are sixteen people with their hands in the air. It's Bill Anderson, Howard Fine, and Roger Colton leading the bunch.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a comment first? Because I think there's a essential misconception out there.
Please, Mr. Epstein.
Thank you. Roy Epstein, member of the Select Board and Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. Given the way this discussion is going, I, I think it would be helpful to put the text of the bylaw on the screen if we could do that.
Yes, we can.
And if we scroll down a little bit. Scroll down some more. So the, as a result of the amendment, you can see now that the definition of relevant property has been changed. And the effect of the amendment is to make the bylaw apply to every property in town. We scroll down a little further. Scroll down, please. The, this, these discussions of regulations on use are all with reference to relevant properties of different sizes. So this was contemplated to apply to residential properties and the sizes that are given here. Refer to the, the typical breakpoints and sizes for residential properties in Belmont. So this whole section is now a kind of, in a little bit of uncertainty or or lack of precision. But I would focus on, if you could scroll down a little further. To paragraph F, this is, remember, the way the bylaw is structured, a gasoline unit can be used in the springtime until May fifteenth. And in the fall, after September thirtieth, for the reasons we gave before. And that applies during the transition period until twenty twenty-six, until twenty, in, starting in twenty twenty-six, there just aren't any more gasoline-powered units, leaf blowers, period. But if you look at the way paragraph F is written, it says basically that during the summertime, no combustion leaf blower shall be operated by a commercial landscaper or other commercial entity. So in my reading of the bylaw, it actually does not apply to DPW. It is not a restriction on DPW because it is not a commercial entity. So DPW can continue using the equipment that it has until the phase out in twenty twenty-six. What, what we have in paragraph G is something that I discussed with Mr. Markcott last spring. The town had committed not to acquire a new gasoline-powered unit even last July one. And Jay, I don't believe you've purchased any gasoline powers since the spring. The bylaw is just making it, just to pick a date, chose January first, twenty twenty-three, but, but really, starting last summer, the policy was put in place not to acquire more additional gasoline-powered units. The existing stock of equipment will be run down, and it'll either reach the end of its useful life and be replaced with a battery unit, or it'll be discarded or sold in twenty twenty-six and replaced with a battery unit. But the, the effects on DPW that have been conjectured, I think, reflect a, a misunderstanding of the bylaw as written.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein, for that clarification. Let's go to Bill Anderson.
Bill Anderson, Precinct Two. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a couple of questions I'd like Mr. Epstein to address, please. And then I would like to perhaps ask a follow-up. Mr. Epstein, your, the basis of your bylaw here is the need for noise and exhaust fume reduction. When you did your study, what statistics were you able to come up with that quantified the incremental noise produced by these gas units in town during a cycle, and let's call that, you know, a year, whatever you, whatever you looked at? What, 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 how did you quantify the incremental noise?
Mr. Epstein?
Roy Epstein, member of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I don't, I don't understand the question.
My, my, my question, Mr. Epstein, I think it's pretty clear. How did you quantify the incremental noise created by the these units that you are proposing be done away with?
Well, every unit that is sold has a noise rating associated with it. So you can look at what the EPA says is the noise output, but that, that's not a very
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me
It's not a very useful number.
Maybe I should, maybe I should, maybe I should clarify my question or make it more precise. With respect to Belmont specifically, and the use of these units in Belmont over a cycle that you measured, what was the incremental level of noise, whether it's in decibels or however, you know, it's quantified, that you, that you were able to, to identify?
I, I don't think that's a well-posed question, but I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any doubt that a large number of people felt this was a significant noise issue, and we responded on that basis.
In the interest of the time, I'll go on to my second question. With respect to the incremental level of exhaust that people have, have talked about here, how were you, what was, what statistically were you able to quantify as the incremental exhaust levels in what, however it's quantified? You know, our first caller had a number of, of items in the list. How, what, what statistically were you able to quantify would be, is in Belmont over the cycle, would be the incremental level of exhaust that these, that these units produce?
We didn't attempt to, to measure it that way, Mr. Anderson. Everybody can see from the EPA ratings what the particulate and CO, and CO2 outputs are from these machines.
So, so you're, you're simply relying on the EPA ratings, right?
Claus, Claus, can you, do you want to respond?
I, I, I think that's sort of a, a silly way to, to phrase it. We have rules, we have lots of rules where we don't
Mr. Becker, let's slow this down and just was getting close to a direct cross-examination, which we, we don't want. Mr. Becker, please identify yourself.
Claus Becker, Precinct Five. And the, the, if you look at a published report, the, the difference between an electric blower and a gas blower is somewhere between five and ten decibel. And I remind everybody that it's a logarithmic scale. And so six means half. But what, what that doesn't tell you is that it's a completely different frequency. So the, these two, two, what are they called? Two-stage motors are explosion motors, right? So they, they give you noise that is very good at penetrating walls and bothering people inside their homes. It's, it's more bothersome. The electric motors, they will run on the local power, so they will tend to give you a sixty hertz.
I appreciate what you're saying.
And also, the, the, the noise of the wind, you know, being blown will also be less because some of those, the, the orange, the steel, they blow air out at two hundred miles per hour. So it's a, and that's a lot more than you have in the rest, in the electric units that you would use in a, in, in a yard. So it's, it is very clearly much less.
One more, if I might, one more question for Mr. Epstein.
No, you have to, right.
One more, one more.
Mr. Anderson, I'll allow you one, but let's not have it a cross-examination.
No, I, I, no, Mr. Moderator, I appreciate that, and I am trying to do this as quickly as possible. But I do think what I'm trying to get at here is the basis for the need for this, for this, for this bylaw. And that's where I'm going with this. So if I could ask Mr. Epstein, you mentioned there were dozens of emails, Mr. Epstein. Could you, could you zone in on that a little bit more? Is it, you know, how many dozen approximately? You know, in order of magnitude, if you have it?
I did not count the emails, but I can tell you, having been on the Select Board now for four years, I got as many emails on this subject as any other issue that I've ever dealt with.
Okay. And would it, would it be fair to say that it's maybe fifty dozen or a hundred dozen?
Miss, Mr. Anderson, we're now in your fourth Mr. Anderson, we're now on your fourth question, so.
Well, I'm simply trying, I'm simply, I'm simply trying to establish my belief and my position that the team, whatever good intentions they may have, has not sufficiently identified or, or, or established that there is in fact a problem with these things in Belmont. They, they, they haven't quantified any of the items that they're claiming to be problems, and even if it is, you know, fifty dozen, I mean, that's maybe what, five percent of the households in town? Maybe, yeah, it's five percent. So I, and I'm wondering if five percent of the people or ten percent or whatever it is is really representative enough to pass a bylaw that affects everybody?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We're, yeah, we're. I gave you more questions than, than normal. So, and, and, and I just remind people, we can ask questions in a way that are, that try to get to the same information. So now, we are at the nine o'clock pitching hour, and we normally take a break, so Ms. Cushman, how many people do we have in line?
We have fourteen, fifteen people in line, Mike.
So fifteen people in line. We're gonna break, as we always do at nine o'clock here for about five minutes and then come back, because clearly we have a lot more conversation. Thank you all. Yeah, but. All right, let's just resume the discussion that we're having on Article Three, and the main motion has amended. Let me make a general comment here. Have the provision of three minutes and two questions. And generally, that is what people follow, but then occasionally, I don't want to necessarily pick on any individual, but we just had the exchange with Bill Anderson. And I think I should have cut it off sooner because at the end, I think there were four questions. And I try to manage this fairly, and often if somebody has a small follow-up third question, I'll allow it. But I think that did go on too, too long and was unfair in the broad sense, because we have a rule in order to be fair. So I do my best in managing it, and I just wanted to acknowledge my part in the, and I'm not trying to put any blame on Mr. Anderson. I'm taking responsibility, so I did want to say that. And with that, Chris Doyle had a point of order.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for the comment you just made. My point of order was during the time during which Mr. Anderson was asking for Thank you, Town Meeting Member Chris Doyle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. And my point of order was during the time that Mr. Anderson was asking for questions rather than two, and was also, in the case of two of his question, not permitting the person to respond to his questions. So I appreciate what you just said about keeping it to what we have, which is the, the two questions. And while you're obviously moderating our meeting, it's also up to town meeting members as well to follow the rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. So let's proceed. Howard Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Howard Fine, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. Good evening. I'll be brief. The last time that this issue came up before town meeting, I was curious as to the number of complaints that were filed with the town. So I did a public records request. This is back in February of this year, February two thousand and twenty-two. And from two thousand and ten up until the time that the public records were produced, I counted twenty-two complaints, of which one was involving the DPW. So twenty-two complaints since two thousand and ten. And it just seems to me, based upon the discourse of this conversation this evening, that I understand that there are a lot of concerns that people have shared, and I no doubt believe that there are legitimate points of view on the other side, but I don't support having a bylaw written when it seems that, by and large, the people who are complaining are a relatively small group of people in comparison to the size of the town. We live so close to Cambridge, so close to Boston. Planes fly overhead. They leave Logan Airport at six o'clock or so in the morning, and you hear them routinely. You can't get away from noise. You hear the town, the train, the commuter rail that passes to the center of town. I live a mile or so away from, from that point, and I can easily hear the train, trucks, you, you name it. There's just a lot of, we just live in an environment of noise. We're not out in the wilderness. So for all the reasons that other people have raised and, and against having this bylaw enacted, I would join them and not support the bylaw. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Roger Colton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Roger Colton. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Six. I'm former co-chair of the Belmont Energy Committee. I just wanted to make two brief points. Number one, in my mind, even though the conversation tonight has largely been about noise, this by, bylaw is not simply a noise bylaw. One impact of adopting this bylaw would be to further the climate action roadmap, and you may remember that Town Meeting overwhelmingly endorsed and adopted the climate action roadmap a few years ago, pre-COVID. And that roadmap provided for what was called strategic electrification, electrifying as many end uses as possible. In furtherance of that, Belmont Light actually provides financial support. Belmont Light provides rebates for electric cars. It provides rebates for electric heat pumps. And just a few minutes ago, I went onto Belmont Light's website, and lo and behold, Belmont Light provides rebates for cordless yard equipment for string trimmers and edgers, leaf blowers, a thirty-dollar rebate from Belmont Light. So this is really a whole-town effort, and this is another example where we have an advantage of having a municipal electric utility. So the, the financial burdens that people are, have been talking about aren't going to be financial burdens that will necessarily be borne by the individuals themselves. The second point I wanted to make is about the concerns about enforcement. I don't think that the concerns about enforcement are well-founded. I would posit to Town Meeting that compliance with a bylaw is not synonymous with enforcement of the bylaw. And I think Belmont's got a, an ideal example in its bylaw requiring sidewalks to be cleaned after snowstorms. I don't think that people comply with that bylaw because the Belmont Police Department is running around and giving out tickets to people who haven't cleaned their, their sidewalks in a timely fashion. I think people want to comply with the law, and we can expect compliance irrespective of what the Belmont Police Department is doing. So those are my, my two points. Number one, that the financial burdens are a lot less, and I should note for the financial burden.
Roger, we're at the three-minute mark. Can I just wrap up?
Yes, the financial burdens, the Belmont Light does in fact say customers, both residential and commercial, that purchase battery-operated electric yard equipment may be eligible for your rebates. So I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Roger. Corinne, Corinne McQ Olmstead.
Thank you, Corinne McQ Olmstead, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I fully support measures aimed at reducing the use of gas-powered equipment, leaf blowers, et cetera. And I appreciate all of the work that has gone into this by so many people. But it's a complicated bylaw, and I have concerns about enforcement as it is, for the reasons that people have already raised. And also, the section about the limits on the number of leaf blowers that may be operated simultaneously on a property, even when we switch to electric-powered leaf blowers. It says that if your property is under fourteen thousand square feet, the limit is two leaf blowers may be operated simultaneously, and this includes blowing leaves, blowing yard debris, cleaning out gutters. The vast majority of properties in town are under fourteen thousand square feet. In my own neighborhood, and I think our properties are approximately nine to ten thousand square feet, and because this was coming up, I kind of paid attention when the landscapers came through town recently. And I noticed, you know, on one of my neighbor's lawns, that three landscapers use leaf blowers simultaneously to blow all the leaves, you know, out into the street where they were then picked up by the truck. And a few things struck me. First, how much louder is the noise of three leaf blowers over two? Is it louder enough to make it worth reducing to two and having it take fifty percent longer? I mean, I would rather have a louder noise for a shorter period of time. Also, there seems to be, and I'm not a landscaper, but there seems to be an efficiency because I noticed this three land, this three-leaf-bower pattern around town where they're in an arc shape because they're blowing them all towards the center. So again, this might be less efficient doing it with fewer. And I think just that the inequity of having different numbers of limits of leaf blowers for different-sized properties, or whether your neighbors have a smaller property than you do. The amendment that was passed was a good move in that direction to making it more equitable, but as written, it's, it's not. And I just feel that we are a town of trees. And, you know, there are eighty-year-old trees on my street that dump buckets and buckets and buckets of leaves, and we clean them up as best we can, but I'm a little concerned that it is limiting the number of leaf blowers will have the effect of, you know, penalizing homeowners and having unintended consequences. So for that reason, I I can't support this, though I would be happy to support an article aimed at, you know, banning, reducing gas-powered leaf blowers. That's simpler in the future. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Cushman.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman. There are fourteen people in line. Roger Rubel, Emily Peterson, and Ada Baptista are the first three.
Roger Rubel, you're next.
I'd like to move the question.
Mr. Rubel has moved the question. Um, so now we'll go to a vote. Let me, let me make sure there's a second. Does somebody want to raise their hand? Second motion? Yes. So with that, uh, we'll go to a vote on terminating debate. This takes two-thirds. So we'll open the polls, vote yes if you want to terminate debate, no if you do not want to terminate debate. If debate is terminated, we go immediately to vote on the main motion as amended. If debate is not terminated, we return to the discussion.
And Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, if I may, there are thirteen people who are having their hands raised at this time.
Thank you, and please keep them raised in case we continue debate. Ten seconds. All right, let's show the tally on motion to terminate debate. Wow. Yes, Ms. Cushman.
And Mr. Moderator, um, as you said, when only when the votes are very close, may I read the emergency votes? At this point, we have two emergency votes. Kathy Cahane voted no. And Mary Kennedy votes yes on the motion to terminate debate. So it does not.
It's one sixty, one sixty-three to eighty-two. And my calculation says that that falls one vote short of two-thirds. So we'll we'll continue the debate. Let's just scroll through the motion to terminate debate. This is about the closest vote in my many years as moderator. Makes sense. It requires two-thirds. All right. Debate will continue. Let's go back to the line. Uh, yes, Ms. Cushman.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. There are thirteen people, sorry, excuse me, fourteen people in line. And the first three, Emily Peterson, Aaron Pickelingus, and Erica Zidell.
Emily Peterson, you're next.
Emily Peterson, uh, town meeting member precinct one. Uh, I rise in support of this amendment of this um motion. And I just, I know that we're in the middle of leaf season and that's why a lot of people are worried about not being able to get the leaves up. But I just want to remind everyone that the 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 timing of the specific uh motion is the summer and that spring and fall cleanup are exempted, uh, to my understanding. And I just want everyone to take themselves back to summer when they've watched a landscaper wearing a gas leaf blower pointed endlessly at blades of grass to get every single, every single one up. So the 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 driveway of the property being landscaped is absolutely spotless. And I think that we don't need that level of 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 gas-powered blowing. And so I hope that we can pass this so that we don't have to have summer of of spotless driveways with no blades of grass. I think we, it's okay. So I guess that's just my point is that we're really focused on the leaves, I think, because we're in the middle of that season. But I think this has been craft carefully crafted to allow workers to get the leaves up. And I, so I please urge you to to join me. And also, um, I just wanted to point out that I thought Aday was behind me in line. I don't know if he lowered his hand by accident.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Uh, Aaron Pickaligas, you're next. Go ahead, Aaron.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Aaron Pickalingus, town meeting member precinct six. I rise in support of this article as amended to address the important health, pollution, and noise issues noted throughout tonight's discussion and work toward the shared long-term goals of our town. Thank you.
Erica Zidell.
Hi, Erica Zidell, town meeting member precinct eight. Um, I also rise in support of this article as it is amended. Um, just a couple of quick points and I I won't be too long, but gas-powered leaf blowers are a public health problem. Um, their emissions are pollution. They are destructive to the health, the lung health of our children and our community. They are damaging to people's hearing. They are exploitative and most harmful. It's the most vulnerable in our society. And they are unnecessary pollutants where viable and health-conscious alternatives exist. So I stand in support of this motion as it is amended, and I hope you will join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma Maserati.
Yes, uh, Norma Maserati, precinct five, uh, town meeting member. I rise in support of this amendment as well. Um, I wish that there was more data to support some of the details of the amendment. Um, there is something published from the Harvard Public School of Health that that shares conclusions from a conference held in April of twenty seventeen um concluding that um leaf blowers, gas-powered leaf blowers do put um children at risk from a functioning and a cognitive standpoint. And for people that are interested in it, I recommend you Google it and read it. Um, similar to a woman who shared some questions and comments about the regulations of the number of leaf blowers to the square footage. Brookline has two leaf blowers for seventy-five hundred square feet or below. The town, the city of Cambridge has one leaf blower for ten thousand square footage and below. And I'd like to understand from um those that did a very good job of researching and writing this. How did Belmont land on two leaf blowers and fourteen thousand and two leaf blowers for fourteen thousand and below square feet? How did we land on that? Given the square footage of most of our lots. And if I have some of these metrics wrong, I apologize, but I'm asking the committee, um, how did we land on that?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Epstein.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Roy Epstein, member of the select board and uh town meeting member from precinct six. Uh, I would say that we studied the parcel map of Belmont exhaustively. And the breakpoints that we identified broadly reflect the distribution of properties in Belmont. Uh, Brookline's different, Cambridge is different, Belmont is different. If you look at the way property sizes are distributed in Belmont, the breakpoints that we identified uh correspond to broadly representative clusterings of property sizes. So they're, they're not perfectly representative, but they're pretty darn close to being. They're they're very good representatives. Secondly, we were also aware of this trade-off where when you have more leaf blowers, there's more noise, but you get the job done faster. So in consultations with, well, our group, which included Dante Mazzoli, who's been a landscaper for a long time, we came up with what to us were uh workable trade-offs, reflecting uh the desire to minimize noise and pollution and also to get the job done as quickly as possible. Uh, and we think that what we propose here actually is the best compromise. I don't know, Klaus, do you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I I'm um, uh, it's
Please identify yourself.
Klaus Becker, precinct five. Um, this happened uh over a course of a number of meetings where we studied the map and we were talking with a practitioner of landscaping. And uh, and and frankly, this is not an exact science. So um, shooting down this whole project be because you know, you think that maybe one or more, you know, that the numbers aren't exactly what you would, what you have done. I don't think this is a, um, it's just an unrealistic expectation, right? We're all volunteers sitting on multiple committees next uh beside our day job. So this is, you know, this is us doing the best we can, including uh input from a large and um a number of sources, including the maps and um neighbors and 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 people. And this is what we came up with. And um the, uh, there was a time when you could have added an amendment. Um, and I'm not, I'm not thinking of anyone particularly when I say you. Um, but that that would be, that would have been a good time to to um to do so. But at this point, um, this is, uh, this is what we came up with, yeah.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Uh, Ms. Cushman, how many people?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, town clerk. There are eleven people in line. Bill Tribelsi, who I believe spoke on the amendment, not on the main motion as amended. Uh, Suzanne Johannette and Jason Catola are the first three.
I would uh ask, since we have so many people, uh, please try to keep your comments as focused and brief as possible. Thank you very much. Bill Tribelsi.
Thank you, Bill Tribelsi, town meeting member uh precinct seven. Just as brief as I can, Roy, when when the discussion came up of of the amendment, you mentioned impacts that were financial as well as logistical and staff-related. And I and I think you went over them kind of quickly, not, you know, I I didn't quite absorb them. Is it appropriate for you to maybe elaborate a little bit more about those impacts of the amendment? Or is it too late for that? Because that's, it sounded fairly substantial in addition to the financial impact that um had a DPW mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Uh, that's an appropriate question since the amendment was adopted. Uh, Mr. Epstein, would you want to reply?
Uh, Roy Epstein, member of the select board, town meeting member precinct six. Sorry, uh, Mr. Moderator, did you say appropriate or inappropriate?
Appropriate. I think it is since the amendment was uh passed.
Well,
And it's now part of the motion.
It it's actually, it's a complicated question. The impact on DPW, uh, I have to think through a little bit. I believe the way the bylaw is written, DPW will continue to be able to use gasoline-powered units through the summer because it is not a commercial entity. I'm not sure about the schools, actually, because I got an email in the interim that the schools may use a landscaper and not town staff. And I'm not sure how to think about that at the moment. In addition, there is the issue of lot sizes. And uh, I'm not sure how that will affect DPW as they work on on um town properties of different sizes and remembering that these restrictions on the number of units will continue even uh after twenty twenty-six, when everybody will be using electric units. So uh, it's a complicated issue. I um and I cannot quantify it at this time, but I think it only goes in one direction, which is that it makes uh the work of DPW more difficult.
Thank you. Suzanne Johanna.
Uh, hi, Suzanne Johanna, uh, town meeting member precinct six. I speak in support of this uh article. Um, both for the uh health reasons that people have talked about and for the um uh keeping us on track with the energy plan. I also want to say that if I had known that you could complain about leaf blowers, I personally would probably have made fifty dozen complaints uh over the past thirty years that I've lived in Belmont. Um, so I don't think we can just uh say because there are only whatever number of complaints, that's, it's not a problem. Everyone I know complains about uh the noise and the particulate matter spread around by the leaf blowers. They're uh they're a health problem and they're an energy problem. And there are alternatives and this bylaw gets at them. Uh, so I enthusiastically support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Catola.
Thank you, Jason Catola, town meeting member precinct three. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'd like if you could direct two questions to town council. Um, I'm wondering if he shares the opinion of Mr. Epstein that the uh amended motion would um there that the the effect on DPW would be that um such that DPW does not need to phase out the gas-powered equipment until twenty twenty-six. And then also, um, if town council has any comments on the sort of imprecision aspect of the uh lot and um qualifications, or sorry, qualificating qualifying section that Mr. Epstein pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hall.
Uh, George Hall, town council. Just looking quickly at the bylaw and I I I do agree with uh Mr. Epstein's um sort of preliminary read that uh references to commercial landscapers, the prohibitions that apply explicitly to commercial landscapers would not apply to the town. So I believe that's in the in the section pertaining with operation of leaf blowers during the summer months between May and the end of September. The the town would be subject to the hours limitations that apply more generally. Um, and I'm not sure what imprecision with regard to the lot size you're referring to, but I did not see a problem with uh the way that was drafted.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Cushman, how many in line?
Mike, could I comment just for a second on the imprecision?
Yes, of course.
Uh, Roy Epstein, uh, member of the select board, town meeting member precinct six. Um, when I said imprecision before, I was actually being a little imprecise myself. The the lot size breakpoints that are in the bylaw were calibrated with the idea they would apply to residential properties. Uh, given the amendment, they will now apply to all properties. And um when I said imprecision, what I meant to say was I now do not, I'm not sure what the impact will be on all the other non-residential properties because we just never studied that. But tho- those lists will now have to be developed and whether the number of um exactly what a properties will be affected and what what non-residential properties will be affected and to what extent right now, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. This time there are ten people in line. Peter Dzekus, Catherine Bowen, and Chris Doyle are the first three.
Peter Dzekus, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Peter Dzekus, town meeting member precinct one. Um, I rise in strong support of this. I'm voting yes. Let me say, first of all, I'm pleased to see that there's a coalition of people who support this. I think a lot of the best things we pass in Belmont um have the support of a coalition of people. And I'm glad there are stakeholders, including a very prominent local landscapers who've been participating in this process and support it. Uh, my main reason for supporting this is that the use of gas-powered leaf blowers is a major health issue as other people have noted. Um, but just to add a few data points to this and a few thoughts about this. Uh, the the basic thing you should know about a gas-powered leaf blower, which for our purposes is just notable for the amount of unburned fuel that it releases back into the atmosphere. So, for instance, most estimates are that a two-stroke engine releases about a quarter to a third of its fuel back into the atmosphere. That means it releases enormous amounts of benzene, which is a known carcinogen. There are studies that have found that they actually release thousands of times the limit of benzene that we should be exposed to. The basic sort of mix of pollutants released by these is 124 times higher than your average car or truck. The amount of carbon monoxide released by a gas-powered leaf blower is 23 times that released by a Ford F-150. If you use a gas-powered leaf blower for an hour, it's the equivalent in terms of atmospheric pollution of driving from Belmont to Atlanta. So in short, these are bad for workers. They're bad for the people who are around them. If you're standing outside and there are three leaf blowers going across the street, it's probably not especially good for you to be out there. That's without getting into issues of hearing loss, which is itself a health issue. I will say that since some people have brought up the decibel question, that people have studied the decibel issues and compared gas-powered leaf blowers to electric-powered leaf blowers. What they've found is that because of the lower frequency that Mr. Becker alluded to before, gas-powered leaf blowers, which are rated at the same decibel level, actually have 15 times as much reach as electric-powered gas blowers. So if you step back for a second, it's amazing that as a society, we haven't already banned these as a country. And that's why we're having to do some of the lifting here in Belmont locally. But in any case, I mean, the health issues just overwhelm everything else here, I think. So I think we should strongly support this and I'm voting yes. I hope everybody will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Catherine Bowen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Catherine Bowen, precinct four, town meeting member. Thank you. I'm rising in support of this amendment, the general bylaws. I agree with a lot of what has been said, but I think we might better think about these devices as dust blowers as much as they are leaf blowers. And I think that is the real reason, or not the real reason, but one of the reasons they're really coming to our attention now is they're simply overused and under-regulated. And so I commend the parties that have come together to try and create, you know, a balanced proposal here. And I'll add that, you know, my observation, living near one of the major parks in town, is that DPW is very judicious about their use of these. And note that we don't have to remove leaves all the time. Many towns have moved towards a mow mulch so that you're mowing your leaves into place. And this is a method that we've used in town as well. So I think when we talk about having to replace every single leaf and dust blower, that's kind of a false equivalency. There are other methods that we can approach our landscaping needs. So I appreciate again the work that's gone into this. And I think we should not let perfection be the enemy of the good. And I look forward to the improvements that this will bring in our community.
Thank you. Chris Doyle.
Thank you, Chris Doyle, town meeting member, precinct six. Thank you. And I just had a few things. I rise in strong support of this, including as amended. First, I really want to thank the committee for spending hundreds of hours over a cross-section of people. I'm sure this was very hard work and given that you were a diverse committee, you probably had to work through a lot of challenging issues. So I really respect the work you did and the time you put in on it. I would say that they're on the point of some of the details. I respect all of that work you put in and I think that we should avoid quibbling some of the, if there needs to be some minor adjustments to sizes later on, given the amendment, that can be come back for a fix as sometimes happens with bylaws. On the matter of noise, there was one comment made that we all have to live with noise. We have airplane paths and so on. But that's actually a great example because there's the Massport Community Advisory Committee and Belmont has a seat on that. I think Will Brownsberger was instrumental in that. And the good work of Myron Casaraba, one of our residents for many, many years, active on that committee, led to actually all of us benefit from actually having reduced airplane noise in our community because of alternative flight paths that have been arranged through that committee. Of course, we have planes, but actually it's reduced because of the work of that committee. So in my mind, this is a good example of where we're not going to get rid of all the noise, but it can be altered and it can be changed, just like the airplane noise has been altered. In terms of complaints, I just would, I'm like the commented earlier. I've lived in Belmont over 20 years. I don't like leaf blowers noise at all. I would have, if I knew that we needed to be having account on that, I literally would have called or emailed every single day. And by my account, that meant that I would have been responsible for 7,300 calls or emails registering my dislike of the noise from leaf blowers. So I don't think the fact that not everybody who dislikes the noise from them calls in is a matter to indicate that it's not a problem. In terms of DPW and the exemption, that seems sensible. We had the weigh-in from town council and I think that would mean that although Jay Marcot quoted a dollar price, he might not have quite appreciated. Maybe, I'm not sure, but when he did that estimate, that the town council would regard the town as being exempt even given that amendment. And so he would be replacing equipment over time. It might not come as quickly as he might have delineated there. In terms of enforcement, there'll be also a self-enforcement mechanism. If people are using gas leaf blowers in their neighborhoods, they're going to have to face their neighbors, just like, you know, and they're going to have to, some of their neighbors will make comments and some of them won't. But there will be a self-enforcing mechanism as well. People won't just have to call the police to have them come down. And finally, this is low-hanging fruit in terms of our climate goals. There are a lot of things that are really hard to change climate-wise. Cars are really expensive. It's hard to put in heat pumps sometimes. Those are things that we can all save for and make progress with over time. This is something that is less expensive and easier to do. And I hope that people support this. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien, Cushman. At this point, we have six people with their hands raised. Other than Ian Watson, who you've been trying to flag down, we will move on to Michael McNamara, Ada Baptista and Travis Frank.
Let me try Ian Watson again in case there was a problem.
Yes, my apologies. My mistake. It was a fat finger. My apologies.
Okay, fine. Please go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Sorry, no comment.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Oh, I see. Michael McNamara.
Michael McNamara, town meeting member, precinct seven. Just, I know there had been a prior town meeting member who had asked about decibel levels. I did a basic search and it said that gas-powered leaf blowers are about the noisiest at 80 to 90 decibels. Granted, as had been mentioned by other town meeting members, that also tends to penetrate buildings and tends not to be the same with electric. Now, electric models are a bit quieter. They're 65 to 70. And some of the newer electric leaf bottles come in about 59. So obviously, if we compare something like 80 to 70, that's 10. If you can compare it to 90 to 70, that's 20. And if you keep going down the next couple of years, I imagine it'll get quieter for electric. So I would argue that if you're looking for a change or a measurement of how loud gas is, putting aside the metric that can penetrate buildings with the amount of volume, it's a good at least 10 decibels, if not more, difference between gas and electric, which I think is sizable in a very small community with lots of buildings that tend to reflect sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Ada Baptista.
Hi, Mike. This is Ada Baptista, town meeting member, precinct three. I'm requesting to move the question, please.
Mr. Baptista moves the question. And so Ms. Cushman?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien, Cushman, town clerk. There are four people with their hands raised.
Great. And we have a second, several seconds. So we'll go ahead to a vote on terminating debate. If you favor self-imposed, you favor termination, vote yes. You oppose, vote no. As I explained before, if debate's terminated, we will go directly to a vote on the main motion as amended. If not, we will continue with the four people in line. Belmont media has joined us, so 10 seconds more in the voting. All right, let's close the polls and see the tally. So the vote is 207 in favor, 37 opposed. Obviously, debate is now terminated. Let's scroll very quickly through this and then we'll go to the main motion and wrap up for the evening. All right, final vote again on terminating debates is 207 in favor, 37 opposed. Since debate is terminated, we now go to the vote on the main motion, including the amendment that the town meeting adopted that was presented by Mr. Robotham. So this is the final action on this article. And then we will recess until tomorrow. So the polls are open. If you vote yes, if you support the motion as amended, no, if you do not. All right, Belmont media has joined us, so take 10 more seconds. All right, let's close the polls and show the vote on the main motion as amended. Final vote is 205 in favor, 44 opposed, four abstentions. So it obviously prevails. So we'll scroll this and then we will adjourn till tomorrow at 6:30 to deal with the library. Right. Thank you. Again, 205 in favor, 44 opposed, four abstentions. Let's put up the motion to adjourn. Move the special town meeting one be adjourned and continued to 6:30 PM Wednesday, November 30, 2022. I take unanimous consent for this motion. I see no objection. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you all for the contributions tonight. We'll see you tomorrow night at 6:30 and have a good evening.